to talk about our proposed classification and comp plan. Before that, if you'll bow your heads with me. Father, we thank you for this chance that we get to be together today. Lord, help us make decisions for all of our employees and citizens that will, Lord, just help make Murfreesboro a better place. We thank you for the chance that we get together here today that we don't have to worry about people coming in our doors or people telling us that we can't meet, that we have that ability, and that's because of the many men and women who serve us every day. We thank you for that chance, and we thank you for the chance to be here. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Stand and we'll do a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Lyons, I think you have an introduction, don't you?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. What I wanted to do at the beginning of the meeting is maybe just update the council about some things that have changed since your last meeting. Carol and Long and David Lookingbill are here from MAG. They'll be prepared to help answer some questions. But in your packet, I sent you a summary of the things that have changed since your last meeting. The first change is the effective date of the plan. When you received the original copy of the plan, we were looking at an effective date of April the 19th. However, because the reviews taken required more time, clearly we've gone past that date. So we've asked MAG to rerun the report with a July 1 implementation date. The second change regards the across-the-board increases. The original study had a 2% across-the-board increase, and I had shared with you, I had anticipated including a 2% across-the-board July 1 for a combined increase of 4%. However, again, because of the additional time required to review the MAG study, what I'm going to include in my proposed budget that will get to you Thursday night isn't across-the-board 4%. MAG has republished the report as of today, and so the binder that was put before you reflects that 4% across-the-board increase. Now, that across-the-board increase is separate and apart from the adjustments to minimum and the adjustments to maximum. Those remain in place, but you will see a change in the across-the-board increase of 4%. I mentioned that the hard copies were handed to you this evening. Our IT department is prepared to load up the revised and updated report to the city's website following this meeting. Now, Mr. Lilly's gotten that ready, so all will have copies available to them. One of the other questions that had come up during the course of our review was supplements for the fire and rescue departments' shift training officer and shift inspector. In looking at that issue, in consultation with HR and Chief Gaines, we are recommending that there be a pay supplement of $1,022 per year. This is the same amount provided to the police fire training officers, the FTOs. That would be effective July the 1st and would be included in my proposed budget. The promotion policy was also discussed at your last meeting, and so what would be in the resolution adopting this on Thursday night for your consideration would be language following MAG's recommended promotion policy, and that is that there's a 5% increase for each pay grade increase and 2.5% for each pay grade increase above the first one, up to a maximum of 15% or the minimum of the new position. Pause right there on the promotion policy. Any questions on that?
Rob, what is the maximum amount? Is it 12.5%? If you go above that, you don't get the following raise in the next pay period?
We're recommending deleting the waiting period that's in the current policy.
Good, good. Okay, that's what I was going to suggest if it was, okay.
Yes, sir. And then I would note that, you know, most promotions are going to be at least two pay grades. In looking at the classification plan, you know, they're usually two grades or more. For instance, a promotion from police officer to sergeant's a four grade increase. That would be a 12.5% increase.
Hey, Rob, sorry.
Yes.
What's the change on that? Was 12.5% and now it's 15%?
No, sir. The 12.5% dealt, under the current policy, the 12.5% dealt with the waiting period. We're recommending deleting the waiting period altogether. We would delete that section, and that the new promotion policy is 5% for the first pay grade, 2.5% for each pay grade over and above that period.
And what that would do would be it would eliminate people from getting promotions and both of them not getting a raise the following period, based on whether or not it was 12.5% met or not.
And there was a 7.5%, I think, was the, is the current policy. If your increase was over 7.5%, you had to wait a year. If it was under 7.5%, you didn't have to wait.
Right.
So no wait now?
Yes, ma'am. That's the recommendation.
So this is under the change summary?
Yes, sir.
Didn't we already have something similar to this in the original?
The MAG study talked about several policies, but there were suggestions at this point, and we've got a format for our employee handbook. What we had said to you last time was, once we get some direction from council about where you want to go in terms of adopting the MAG policy, that we would be coming back to you with several employee handbook revisions or new sections. But I know as we began to study, you know, the report, there was a lot of conversation with the council about, well, what is this going to mean in the future for promotions? And point in fact, if and when you do adopt it, there may be somebody who's got a promotion the following week, and we felt like the proportionality of a 5%, 2.5%, 2.5% made a lot of sense. And so that's why we wanted to put that before you with adoption of the plan as well.
Mr. Lyons, do we have written criteria for promotion? If five of us apply for a job and one of us is chosen, are the people that were not promoted, do they have a knowledge of what they need in the future to be promoted?
Mr. Young, I'm not sure I can answer that question. We've got a promotion policy, but in terms of how each department conducts its promotional interviews and selection, you know, at the end of the day, you know, they're charged with hiring the best person for the job. Whether or not there's any feedback given to the unsuccessful candidates, really, I'm not sure I could answer. Mr. Godwin may be able to help me.
Wouldn't that, I feel that's important. I mean, how can I know, how can I improve? How can I get my step up if I don't know what I'm weak in and what I'm strong in and how I can move up the ladder if I'm not getting any feedback? Do we have a policy for that?
Yeah, there's, specific to the city handbook, there's not a policy, Vice Mayor, that delineates feedback to each candidate. I know in the public safety departments, there are general orders that specifically address far more granular the criteria for promotion. So there isn't as much, if you will, feedback with respect to job performance as there is with respect to the criteria with which the general order is explicit.
But still, to me, that sounds important. If I'm, if us, the three of us are applying for a job, and, you know, we're, somebody's going to get it and two aren't, you know, how will I improve my situation if I don't have some feedback and criteria for that?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Young, one of the reasons why I think we've got an interest in having performance reviews citywide, not just for those going before a promotional panel or a promotional interview. The idea that we can give our employees feedback about where their strengths are and where there's opportunity for them to improve or suggestions for how they can develop their skills more fully, doing that organization-wide is clearly an ideal place to be.
An ideal place to be, but we're not there yet.
No, sir, but I, that is a direction I think, you know, we need to head.
And piggybacking off of what you just said, Vice Mayor Young, my question is, what incentives would an employee have to try to be promoted? I mean, it sounds like what we're saying is, Doug, you get the job, Bill and I don't, but y'all just try next time. We don't have any language that will help you get the job, nor does it seem like we have any incentive to make me even want to apply next time. It's just like job evaluations, you know, you have steps and you work towards goals, but seems like it's a dead issue once someone is promoted. Just, you know, throw your name in the hat and hopefully your number comes up, or something, sounds like.
I think clearly the additional expectations that come with a larger role, our incentives and a number of our employees would tell you that in terms of the greater responsibility and a result of what they have applied for in the first place. I do think Mr. Lyons is correct, you know. Performance management getting to that point would provide us with that opportunity to be more consistent throughout the city. Because I know, for instance, some of the smaller departments, you know, there's immediate feedback because of the size and the scope of the department. It's far easier to give a candidate who isn't successful in getting promoted, but in some of the larger departments, it gets a little bit more difficult and complex.
Mr. Young, I just, to talk about this, because I really think that's one of the, when we talk about the pay plan, one of the things that keeps coming up that we see is, okay, how can I move up throughout the different grades in the pay plan, or how can I get promoted? Because if you have a large department and you have few opportunities for upper mobility, you know, those, when those opportunities become available, that's important. Noting that we're working on getting to performance management, what can we do to ensure that, you know, positions are, if you have one position that's open and you have four or five people who apply for that position, what can we do to make sure that the communication is there where the department head clearly explains, this is who I'm going with, these are the things that we've got to work on? I wouldn't think we'd have to have performance management involved to be able to have a department head to sit down with their individuals and say, here's, here are things that we have to improve on. I mean, is that?
No, you're right, Mayor. It wasn't, it wouldn't take a rewrite of the system. I think it's good coaching. I think coaching our employees up is inherent in responsibility of most of our department heads. My colleagues would tell you that they do that right now. A lot of department heads are very adamant about coaching their employees up, particularly if they're unsuccessful in a promotional bid. So that's happening already.
And we've got great department heads, but what do we do to coach our department heads, maybe if they're not strong at communication?
Well, I think the same thing applies. I think that the coaching and the feedback that the department heads get from the city administrative team, in essence, cascades down to the department level, and those are very clear, they're very explicit. So I think it's just a matter of using that, that leadership by example that Mr. Lyons and Crumley already use.
Okay. So any other questions on kind of the promotion policy? I've got a couple other changes I want to highlight, and then I know Ms. Long's got some things that she's going to want to share with you as well. The other item that had some discussion was the administrative review process. We had shared with you approximately 150 employees have administrative review forms that have been sent to MAG, and they're prepared to summarize. They've not completed their review of all of those yet. They're continuing to work on that, and they can summarize that for you here in a second. But one of the things I felt was important was that if the administrative review does take a little bit of time, should the council approve the MAG report? And a change is recommended out of an administrative review form. It didn't feel fair to the employee that they would be penalized, that, you know, if that is in fact the case, we would make any increase retroactive to the July 1 implementation date so that no one's harmed because they were on the bottom of the stack versus the top of the stack. And maybe this might be a good time for them to summarize what they've seen in some of the administrative reviews.
Right. At this point, what we're doing is trying to group the requests together so that we can kind of keep them in associated issues. And as we look at them, some of the issues are going to require a little more in-depth look than others. We want to make sure that everyone gets a review and a thorough review, but by breaking them out into these groupings, which we have now done, we've started back now through the groupings, none of this happens in a vacuum. And so any action potentially impacts on not only others that have requested review, but also potentially has impact back among job titles and/or employees that did not request a review. So we're trying to make sure that as we go through here, we don't say, okay, yeah, this is good, that's good, this one doesn't make it, without making sure that when we make those decisions, there aren't other unintended consequences or domino effects that we didn't think about. So we're trying not to rush this because we believe, as Mr. Lyons was saying, that these are important. If it has to be retroactive for a month or two to make sure that everything is right and all of the points connect together, we want to make sure that happens, rather than just saying, we need to get through these in 16 days, and who cares what the results are, because that's not going to work.
In the 60 that you've already done, have there been those kind of instances where one affected another position?
At this point, I have not gotten to those that have a lot of potential for that. So, no, I have not run across those. But in some of the other groupings that I haven't come across, you know, that I haven't started to dig into yet, there is more potential in those groupings. And so I'm taking that approach.
In the ones that you are reviewing that we sent back for review, are we being charged for those?
You're being charged for the time.
Okay, that's a little problem that I have. We hired you all to do the report and to come back to us with recommendations. And as a council, we are held liable for what you send back, but we also held liable to the taxpayers who's footing the bill here. Now, as a firm, if we are having to pay you all for everything we send back to you to review, it sounds like to me, it looks like to me, that your report wasn't up to par to what we paid you to do. And I'm saying this because if you had 200 reviews that come back to you where the city employees, and when I say city employees, I'm going to say we, because we are part of this, felt like it was wrong, then I don't think it's fair to charge the city for your time of something I feel like that wasn't properly done in the first place. This is just my opinion. Now, if you are charged, and I think out of good faith that you should adjust that amount you're charging the city, because 200 reports coming back to you, that's a whole lot. And I think about, it's about 20%. And I think the whole problem with this whole study is misclassification of jobs, of job titles. I personally think, and I'm not down in your business or anything in what you do, I'm not doing that, but your job was to just make recommendations to us. And once you made those recommendations to us, paying you, I don't think it's fair that we are being charged extra money for that, because it's just a recommendation. Then once we get your report, and then we decide what we're going to do with what you found. So number one, I think that's unfair to the city and to our, from what we're paying you for. I just think personally, that's unfair. Now, I feel like, so let me ask you a couple of questions. When you all were compiling all your information, did you talk to the department heads? Okay, were they, what exactly did you ask the department heads when you were talking to them?
We actually spoke with the department heads a number of times. Initially, we asked them to help us by identifying any specific issues that they felt were of concern within their department. Once everything was done, we came back to them with our initial proposals, asked them to look through it and see if they felt there was anything that had been missed or not understood.
Let's start right there. You asked them to look at, were they given the opportunity to actually go through what you found and critique it at that time? Like, I don't feel like this is right, this is right. Or did you just lay it in front of them and just say, okay, this is what the ranges we have, and does this look okay?
It was a combination of those. We had the ranges. We also had what is in your book as the class comparison list, which shows what the recommended title is and what the current title is. And they had access to that information, as well as the pay grades that were being proposed along with that.
I still think the whole problem is that when you came back with the final report, since you involved the department heads at first, and I think that's the key here, the department heads, since you involved them the first time, when you came back with the final report, I feel like the department head should have been given the opportunity to look at your report to see if Shane is in the right group, Doug is in the right class and all. I think that would eliminate a whole lot of this.
They were given that opportunity within their own department. They didn't get to look at somebody else's department to make those decisions.
I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that because we are getting too many complaints out of these various departments, and some of the complaints are coming from the department heads. So I can't agree with that.
And that is, that is true, but...
But if they were given, if they were given this to look at, when you finished with that, then why are we getting so many complaints?
With all due respect, if everything they wanted was exactly right, you'd have that already, and we wouldn't have been here. So just because they wanted something doesn't mean that that's the way that it fit into the overall structure.
That's, that's the point I'm getting to, the fit. This doesn't fit. It doesn't fit. It does not fit.
It depends on your point of view. When you are looking at only part of the structure, it may not fit. But when you look at the overall structure, and that's our responsibility, that is your top administration's responsibility, is to look at how the overall structure works together.
That's what I'm looking at, the overall. It doesn't fit. We're trying to put a circle in a square. It, I mean, it doesn't fit. Now, when you first started and asking the department heads and ask the employees to do the J-A-Qs, okay. Then it's coming back to you, you say, okay, this is a cat, four legs, furry. Okay, that's how it started. But when you finished your report, I feel like you should have gone back to the department heads to look at it, because that cat now is a dog, still has the four legs and still has fur, but it doesn't fit.
Ma'am, we did sit with each department head with the information I just shared with you.
Why are some department heads not agreeing, and why are all these employees not agreeing?
As I indicated, just because it's right doesn't mean they like it.
It's not a matter of like, and that's a good thing. It's not a matter of like.
I respectfully disagree.
It's a matter of fairness and equality. That's what we're talking about.
And that's what the overall structure is. It's not about any one department or any few people within the department or any title within a pay grade or grouping. It's about the overall structure.
And it doesn't fit, is what I'm saying. It doesn't fit Murfreesboro. It doesn't fit.
Can I take another view on the administrative review forms? You know, the question about whether or not to get paid for doing that or something, I mean, I think that, you know, for you guys to go back and do those was not part of the original deal. So, you know, perhaps, I certainly see Ms. Scales-Harris's point that, you know, if they had been more accurate on the front end, maybe we wouldn't have all this extra work on the back end. So I see that point, but I understand it's not part of the thing. So if we need to pay you for that, so be it. My concern, I guess, would be, or my question would be that if you've only, we've known this was an issue for a good number of weeks, somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, four to six weeks, we've known that we've had these administrative review forms back for over six weeks now, I think, if I'm doing my math right, somewhere in that neighborhood. And if we've just now gotten to the point of getting those grouped up, how many hours have we already spent just getting them grouped up and really haven't gotten much work done? And do we have some sort of finite number that we know, hey, this is about what we're going to cost the taxpayers to go through these review forms?
I think I could just respond to that. That's an excellent point. Two things happened. All of these forms poured into the city, and with respect to what Ms. Scales-Harris said, I wanted to mention that in the way that this was structured...
Hold on one second. I don't mean, is there, Rob, is there any way we can make sure that the microphone's working? Because no one can hear anything.
Yeah, Michael?
I know, I don't think ours are working either.
Test, hello? Mine's working.
Is this off?
I think so. No, he turned it on.
Is that working? Oh, okay.
There you go.
What I wanted to say was, when the forms came in, and I wanted to just loop back if I could for just a minute, with respect to the comments that were made, most organizations really don't provide beyond the administrative review process. Let me use yours, David. Most organizations don't provide beyond the administrative review process. So if the top-level organization looks at it and determines, this is appropriate, this is departmentally appropriate, then pretty much you're done. Murfreesboro has gone above and beyond... Murfreesboro has gone above and beyond that. And be aware that when you do this, you're going to get what you asked for. Every employee has been given the opportunity to turn in a request for review if they want to. So, the fact that you have over 1,200 employees in the organization, and 200 people said, well, why not? You know, there's no downside to it, so why don't I turn in a request for review? So, you really have sort of set yourself into a situation where employees perceive that this is an okay thing to do, and it is okay. There's nothing wrong with them wanting us to take another look at it. But I wanted to get back to your very good point, and that was the timing on this, and I think it's important for the process. One thing, because of being mindful, the Human Resources Department being mindful that this was beyond what we initially had done, we set up the review process, and then the city came back to us and said, look, can you please take a look at the ones that we, we don't want to have to deal with, because we're too close to it? We said, sure, we'll be glad to. But the Human Resources Department then took all of these that came in, used a format that David gave them, to boil them down, to make them easier for us to go through. Now, we're doing another boil down on that, to come up with categories of requests, to minimize the time that we have to be involved with it, which is why we didn't want to take them piecemeal as they came in. Because if we have a whole group over here that are essentially requesting the same thing, then we have a way of looking at those questions and saying, okay, if all these questions are substantially the same question, and we have a similar type of response to it, we don't need to charge you, okay, here's one, let me do this and write the response. Here's the next one, let me do this and research this all over again. We can look at those and give you a, a good, solid answer, because they're all asking similar, for similar types of questions. So, we're trying to cut things down and, and minimize the impact of that. So, your question and your point was well-taken. And also, it speaks to the time that's being taken, because that, that time on the front end was all done by the city at our request. You know, don't send us 200, because we'll have to pick through them one by one, and that's going to take too much time, you know, consolidate them down. So, it was a good question, and we are mindful of the city's budget, and not just, you know, sitting there shuffling papers all day long.
What I think we've seen is a clarification in what we expected the study to do. And, and I think that's part of, of the reason we're having to see you go through things over again, is because I think there was a situation that, I've had to adjust my expectations of what this report is to do, because I think, in fairness to you, my expectations may have been unrealistic, because there was a hidden history that was involved that I had hoped this would address. I think now it's trying to. Initially, I don't think it did. The, I'm going through the presentation of what we just received before the meeting here, and it looks to me like some of the issues have been resolved, that were probably things that are, you've got on your list that you're going to work on, once you get them all categorized and sorted. Having said that, if I had have asked the custodian to clean this room up, and I'd come in this room, and it wasn't as clean as I expected it to be, and I asked him to work on a couple other spots, I wouldn't expect him to do it for nothing. I would expect, and I don't expect firefighters to work for nothing, I don't expect police officers to work for nothing, and I don't expect the custodian or yourself to work for nothing. You should get paid for the work you do. So, I don't have a problem at all with you billing us to do what we ask you to do. Our punishment is, maybe we're asking you to do too much if, if we don't want to pay you so much. But the, but, but I have seen nothing but effort put forth by you guys to try and meet what it is we've asked you to do. You've adjusted, you've adapted. I mean, as, as far as some of the basic essentials in this, where we had comparable cities, some of them, some of the complaints I've had was, well, we don't compare with this city, or we don't compare with this force. I, I get that, but we had to have something to work from. We couldn't just draw numbers out of the sky and say that's fair either. So, so I do think, even though it may not be a perfect scenario, and nor do I think this will ever be perfect, we could work on it from now till 1,000 years from now, and it will not be perfect. But, 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 but it is a starting point, and it gives us something that we can progress from. Just because we approve this, doesn't mean we can't ever change it. And, and I think that's the, that some people seem to feel like, once we voted on this and we've gone to this plan, that we're fixed, and it's never going to change. I don't think that'll be true. I, I do foresee the ranges moving. I do foresee the ability to make adjustments, which I think that's something that Rob has discussed already. I mean, is it going to be perfect? Never. But, but is it a good plan? Is, is it something that we can work with? I'll be honest with you, you've gotten me to the point now that I'm comfortable enough to say that if it were presented as, as it looks like it is right now, that, that I would support it with the understanding that we're going to continue to make adjustments. So, it, but, but, you know, in, in some cases, the weakness of the report was my expectations. And, and I don't mean that in a bad kind of way. I mean, I, I mean that what, some of, some of the hidden history issues and things that I wanted it to address are unrealistic expectations, and, and that's my fault. That's not your fault. So, thank you for what you've done.
If I could make a, a comment, just kind of follow up on what you have just been saying, you are absolutely correct. This is not the end. This is the beginning. This is the starting place. This is square one and the tools to move forward, because no organization is ever static for very long. Jobs will change. New jobs will come, some jobs will go away. The market will change from year to year. You all have been around long enough to know that, well, I'm going to show my age a little bit, but way back when, when the financial institutions had all of their issues, accountants were out on the street corners selling pencils. You could get an accountant for virtually nothing. Three or four years later, that was not the case. You have to keep up with those kinds of things. Nurses are another area where you have fluctuation in supply and demand. So, all of this ties together within your organization, but this, as you indicated, this really is just a starting point. This is an overall structure and a set of objective guidelines that can be used within your organization here to go forward. Is it perfect? Like you said, no. And there's no way that it's ever going to be perfect, because there's always going to be something that changed. There's always going to be someone who isn't happy. I used to work in another consulting operation, and the head of that operation used to say, we know we've done a good job when everybody is equally unhappy. If everybody's happy, you've probably not done very well in getting things structured. So, thank you very much. I, I just wanted to, to tag in on, on your comments there, that this is not the end. It really is just the beginning.
I've got a quick question. And this is one of the things I've, you know, you, a plan this size, you see some things that are positive, some things are negatives. But one of the things I've been struggling with, and Mr. Lyons, this is probably a question for staff as well, but if I, I'm going to use you as an example. If we hire you in at a certain amount, and then we say, if you do everything you're supposed to do, this is what your end pay is going to be 10 or 15 years from now. And then you do everything you say for 10 years, but then all of a sudden, we look and we get a study, and we say, hey, Mr. Lyons, by the way, we've rechecked, I know that we told you this is what your pay's going to be, but that pay's now going to be, we've checked the market, and we've, the pay's going to be lower. That's the, one of the things I, I'm having, having trouble with, that if we've told an employee, this is what your top-out pay's going to be, and now we're lowering that number. So, I can understand that with people who we hire to come in, but if I tell you that if you do everything you're supposed to do, this is what your pay's going to be, then it doesn't feel right to say, we're going to lower that because the markets, markets changed. I, I understand that with somebody who applies later on, but how do, how do you normally handle that in other organizations?
Well, I think one of the things that you need to consider is, if you hired somebody 10 years ago, and you told them that was the top-end pay, that pay's probably been adjusted seven, eight, nine times over the 10 years. So, there's, there's two answers to that. First, the market is always shifting, the schedules are always shifting. And the other is, that what you told somebody 10 years ago is probably not what they're at today. It's probably changed considerably over the years.
What if it were three or four years ago?
Yes. I mean, you know, we're looking at, we're looking also at a compensation structure that was never, never reviewed from an internal value perspective, as well as external market. In other words, trying to put all of the pieces together. And this is what we do every day. And sometimes the, the ranges go up, sometimes they stay the same, sometimes they go down. You requested that information, and we provided it. The number of people who were really significantly impacted are, is small, not that it isn't small to the people who were impacted, I'm sure that matters to them. But the other, from a, from a perspective of what an employee may have been told, we just sat in Glenn's office, and he went back through where he took two actual case studies from the city, and did a longitudinal review of pay from the day they were hired through the proposed implementation of this report. And the policies have changed, I don't even know, several times, over the course of the years, and nothing that we have done has said, we're going to go back to the beginning and try and fix every policy. As I did say before, the decisions that were made, appears that, and has been confirmed, were driven by policies and practices that were in place at the time the decisions were made. So, we, we can't go back and change that. We can only sort of draw a line in the sand and say, okay, at this point, this is what we're going to do. It looks, it's fully integrated, and we're going to go forward from that. The other comment that I wanted to make is sort of from a perspective of whatever council was seated, elected at the time that maybe some decisions were made 10 years ago, you really can't bind future councils. Even what you do doesn't bind future councils forevermore. I mean, you try and set up a structure that's consistent and internally equitable carrying forward, but the reality is, if every one of you decided not to run for reelection, and a whole new council was elected, they could come in here and say, we're not doing this, we're going to do something else.
Can I go back to the point? You know, you mentioned that, you know, Shane's kind of asking about the max-out pays, and, you know, you sort of mentioned that they're probably not where they were 10 years ago when you told them that anyway, you know, and, and that makes the assumption that they have probably been increased since then. I think the problem we're seeing is, you know, five years ago, when a lot of people were selling pencils on the street, you know, during the economic issues, you know, when we look back at our last plan, which was done much closer to that timeframe, the Burris or Burl, or whatever they're called, you know, we've gone down since selling pencils on the street on these people. So, it's not like we're saying, okay, look, you know, you, we set this maximum back when the economy was outstanding, you know, the economy now is so poor that we're having to lower some of these maximums. I mean, it's a significantly different scenario than that. So, to have the understanding that we would say, well, we're just going to assume that their maximum pay has been increased so much, is just incorrect. I mean, what we're dealing with here is lowering them, not increasing them. So, I, I think, you know, to kind of go, well, we're not telling them what we should have told them, or we're, you know, we're not doing what we told them, or it just doesn't exist that way. All we see is that some of them are going down.
And, and that is true. Some of them are going down. But if you look at the numbers, I believe in terms of actual numbers of positions, there were only 60 or 70 positions who, right now, their maximum is going down. You don't know next year or the year after that, whether the market will put those back up or not. Now, unless a person is right on their maximum, they're not really being impacted. It's kind of like, I lost a million dollars in the stock market, because stocks went down 10%. Well, I didn't lose any money unless I sold.
I disagree with you.
Okay.
Respectfully, I disagree with you, that I, I think that the, that if you were in that position, and your maximum went down, you'd feel like you lost something.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you wouldn't feel that way. I, I did not mean to say that. I'm saying that they did not lose any money.
My, my, they would lose money. It's not like you can just sit there and wait for the stock market to come back up. The max is lower. They're never going to get to where they thought they were going to get, period. It's different than saying...
That would only be true if the pay grades never changed, and we've already said that this is not a static system. Every year, the structure is reviewed.
If you, if your pay just went down, would you be looking forward to the next pay grade review, so that we could lower it again? Probably not. What I'm telling you is, there is no expectation that it has to go up. Case in point, right here below me. So, I guess, you know, part of what I had asked about earlier was, you know, can we just not reduce those numbers, and how bad would that throw us out of whack? And, I mean, I don't know, we've, we've talked about that a little bit, but haven't got really that, that answer.
Well, let me, if I could, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I, I think there's, there's an emotional validity from the employee perspective on that.
I think there's a mathematical validity.
And I think there's a practical validity. But, and this is a but, that ultimately, you know, we make the recommendation on it. But if you have, in a pay grade, where jobs have, we've done the job profile, we've looked at the job, job analysis questionnaires, and the information has come in from the employees, and we've said, okay, here's 14 jobs that we're now grouping in this new pay range, new proposed pay range. And the integration using our regression analysis of the external market value with the internal job profiles, is here's the new proposed pay range. So, you have 14 jobs in that proposed pay range. You have three that are higher than the old range maximums would have been. You have two that are maybe down lower a little bit than the old range maximums, and some, because we're not using the old ranges, where these, this is a holding structure. Nothing's going to be spot-on. So, if you're going to keep the old maximums, which old maximum do we keep? Do we say, okay, well, this one here that we feel is out of line with the market and the internal relationship, had a top end up here, $2,000 higher, which equates to another pay grade? So, do we move everybody in 14 to 15? And then what do we do with the people that are in 15, that historically, and, and validated their relationship to, some of these people in 14 would be higher? Now, do we have to move them up, or do we, do you see where, it's an unworkable way to try and, and take pieces of an old structure and move it into a new structure, because...
What did we do? So, as far as what our current market pay is for somebody, you know, you guys sort of were given a mandate, apparently, a year ago, that nobody would lose money.
Money, salary. Nobody's salary would be reduced.
Right. So, when you did the market study, what did you do for the, when you did the market study, and somebody's getting overpaid? Did you make a choice as to say, well, this person is not going to go down, because even though we saw that the market showed a lower number for what that person should have gotten paid in their pay grade, right? So, we're, we're assuming that that existed.
It could have happened.
Right? I mean, did it exist?
It could have, yes.
I mean, no, did it exist?
Are you saying, not that...
I'm asking...
Well, we're looking at pay ranges and pay ranges to the external market, and setting up a new structure, and then where the jobs fit within those new structural ranges, and you don't have the same internal relationship with all the jobs.
But if you had a, if you were in a pay grade, and so for the number of years that you're supposed to be in between this end of the pay range and this end of the pay range, somebody's high, you know, say they're halfway through it, but they're 60% into the pay range, for instance, but we don't want to move them back to 50% to the pay range, right? Because we didn't want anybody to go back in salary.
Well, we don't...
Follow?
Yes, and I, I hope I'm understanding, but we don't, when we're putting jobs into a proposed salary structure, we're looking at the job... jobs into a proposed salary structure, we're looking at the job or collectively the work that's being performed. We're not looking at individual salaries.
How do we determine who should be getting paid how much?
That's done after the, the report is, that's done after the structure. The structure is designed first, based on the market. Then the jobs are evaluated, creating job profiles for each job. That's integrated in order to allocate where the job or the work fits within the structure. At no point until we run implementation reports, which is the very last thing we do, is there any discussion of what any individual is making. Our software will not reduce a salary under any circumstances, an actual salary. So, if Suzie is paid $15,000 over the max of what the proposed range is for Suzie, it's not going to calculate an increase for Suzie, but it's going to keep Suzie's salary, the current and the proposed will be the same. So, we are not looking at individual salaries.
Okay, that's cool. So, what my, my question is, why is that any different from saying, "We have some positions that are going to have a higher maximum than other positions in that same grade if we already have inconsistency in the stand, from the standpoint of..."
Because the indication upfront was not that no pay grades would be lowered. The indication was that no employee would have dollars taken out of their paycheck.
Well, what if we're telling you right now, at the end, not at the beginning, that no ranges would change from a maximum standpoint? That's what my, that's what my question was originally a few weeks ago. If we said, "Okay, we told you, no salary decrease, but we didn't give you any parameters for the ranges. And so, you guys just went out and you did the ranges." Well, what if we would have said 13 months ago, "No salaries are going to decrease and we don't want any maximum ends of the ranges to go down?" Because it's the same thing. We're taking money away from people either way you look at it, right? I mean, that's sooner or later. Well, sooner or later, you're taking money away from them if we get to keep them working here, right?
Let me see if I can help. And I understand, you know, this is a, it's got some emotion to it, but let's start with the classification piece of the study first. I like examples. If you went to tab four, maybe just turn to page six. Let's use, I want to maybe use some real examples here maybe to help illustrate the point. And you'll see in grade 114, there's 13 positions in there. So, when MAG did the job analysis via the JAQ, studied the market from the peer, the surveyed cities, and they did all of the analysis, they established a pay range that went from $39,222 to $57,420.
What page are you on?
I'm on page six behind tab four.
Tab six, tab four.
So, in this study, you know, over and above what Burris did, that was, you know, another consultant and another methodology, MAG came back and said, "This is the pay range for grade 114." Is everybody there? Now, every single one of those 13 or 14 positions had their own individual pay range under the Burris study. Let's just say for the sake of argument, you know, all but one of them saw the maximum increase. So, in other words, $57,420 was more than anybody had in Burris. But without naming any of the positions, one of them had the maximum be lowered. Now, if you said, "Let's go back and use a different consultant and a different methodology and plug in that maximum," how do you make that fit with the other, you know, 13 positions in grade 114? Because now that one title is going to top out at $59,000 or $60,000. But there's seven positions in grade 115 that now they've grouped that one position, even though the analysis said it should be in 114, now you've taken one title and put it in 115 even though it graded out to be one grade lower. And that gets to be that internal and external relationship between all of the positions up and down within the organization.
Let me direct your attention to something that's even more compelling. If you would go to tab five and flip through, it's a sideways page. If you'll flip through the class comparison list too, you get to pay grade 104.
Give me a page number.
What page is that?
It's not numbered.
It's bottom right. It's four or five pages in on tab, tab five, pay grade 104. And the reason that this is a really compelling and interesting thing you need to see is, what this shows is, this is showing, when you look at the respective, you see the pay grade 104 and then the dark line across the top, it says $24,079 midpoint, or market point is $28,894 and range maximum is $35,251. If you look at the numbers below that in, not emboldened type...
It's the seventh page, Doug, in the tab. Tab five.
Section five, and then flip down to where you see pay grade 104.
It's the seventh page, if you...
You had some unusual salary structures for your part-time people. And when we took all of these titles that became administrative support specialist one, if you look over in the non-bold-faced under the pay grade 104, these were the original salary ranges annualized for these job titles, annualized. So, these were not the new, this was not the actual pay. But if you tell us, "Okay, we're not going to rate, we're not going to lower anybody's," then you're looking at an annualized old salary range of $56,550 for an office assistant. So, there, there's a lot of effort that went into bringing internal equity and fairness into this study. So, I'm saying, just look at something like this. You, you don't want that. You don't want that. There was a lot of internal anomalies.
So, let me ask you this. So, just straight to your point, really, let's look at the groundskeeper that's in the same 104, right? That groundskeeper is in the same pay class and is expected to have the same exact responsibilities. That person's maximum is $32,694, yet the secretary is $56,550, right?
That was your original. Those numbers are your old plan.
But that person is not going to get reduced.
That, that, those numbers are your old plan. Our range is 24 to 35 on that.
I see, but if that person's already employed, you're, what you're saying is that they're annualized that to that number, right?
I'm saying that your old plan had some really strange anomalies in it.
All right, that's fine, but...
That in effect was what they were promised.
The old plan, they were promised $56,550.
Are we reducing, are we reducing the part-time clerk or the part-time secretary? Are we reducing their pay so that they're not going to annualize to the old plan?
Nobody's pay got cut. Nobody was at that, but when you go back and say, "We have to look at the old maximums," that's what you're looking at.
Yeah, well, if you're telling me it's not fair, it's not fair to keep old maximums, yet it's fair to have people, because the same grade, pay grade should be getting the same maximums, what you just, what you just said. Well, how then is it less, how then is it more fair that these same people that are in the same pay grade have a 75% difference in what their pay is?
They don't under our proposed...
They don't.
But they're not losing any, so if they're already in the system, they're not going to go backwards.
They're not losing their salary. There, as you pointed out before, losing potential. You really want a clerk...
You have office clerks that were maxing out, if you looked at the annualized under your old plan, at $56,000. You'd have to go all the way to pay grade 114 to where you get consistency...
I'm with you, I'm with you on the market. What I'm, guess I'm trying to say is, if we have a part-time office clerk, or let's just say they're receptionist, we've got a full-time receptionist that's been here for 25 years and he or she is making $56,000 because they're topped out, right? That could happen, right? Because that was the old plan. They could be making that amount of money.
It could happen.
So, we're not going to take them backwards to $35,251, correct? Because we said, "We're not taking anybody backwards."
Right, we're not cutting anybody's salary.
So, how is it fair that that person who is in the same pay grade is making, I don't want to reduce them, okay? What I'm, what I'm trying to illustrate, though, is, the reason that you're giving me for not being willing to keep the maximums in place for these 30-some-odd positions that are out there that are going to reduce their maximums is because, well, there's, you know, we're making it sound like, "Man, there's just no way we could ever do that because, man, it would, you know, then you'd have all these people that are out of their grade and it's going to domino effect." It already exists. And so, why would we, for $10,000 a year or something that's just such a nominal number, why would we take away when the essence of what we, the essence of why we gave you the mandate, I wasn't here, but I assume, the essence of why we gave you the mandate to not reduce anybody's salary is so that we're not taking away from people, right? So, on the same token, we're taking away some potential from people. If they're one or two years away from maximizing or from maxing out, it feels probably a lot more realistic and it is mathematical for that person, you know, noticeably than somebody who's 15 years away. I get it, but it's real money to real people. And so, what I, my point is to say that it's just going to get completely messed up and that, you know, there's going to be no consistency if we do that, to me, just seems a little out of, I mean, it seems like we already have that.
Well, you have an old maximum for an office support and office assistant, which was your entry level office position under your old plan, that is $1,000 a year higher than a master plan operator, and there's just no comparison in the responsibilities. So, what we have done is try and sort the responsibility levels and put the people in a rational proposed plan.
And that's cool. I really, I actually, I like it. I like how it fits, but it's not really the point I'm trying to make. I think, the point I'm trying to make is that, to say that we cannot veer off of this in any way, shape, or form because it would just completely mess the whole thing up, really, I can't buy that. Because there's already stuff that's in there from past policies or from this policy or whatever that are already not where everything has to match up exactly like it says on your proposed range. That exactly is what you just illustrated to us.
But this anomaly that you're talking about, if we were to maintain a part-time clerk at $56,000 a year as, as a maximum top out, they would be so overpaid in the system by the time they topped out that there would be no need for them to have a 104 rating. We would start everybody out at a 114 or whatever.
I'm all right with that. I'm just, what I'm telling you is, that could already be existing.
I mean, just because you're overpaid doesn't mean you need to continue to get more money. I mean, I'm not trying to pay anybody any more money.
And I think that's a very good point that we don't necessarily...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, stop just a second.
Yes.
I didn't say anything about paying anybody any more money if they were topped out. So, if, I'm not talking about taking this part-time clerk from $56,550 up any higher, all right? That has nothing to do with what I'm just talking about.
And I understand that, but what if that part-time clerk is at $30,000? Are you going to let them keep going up to 56?
I would prefer they stop at the market range.
Thank you. I would prefer that, too.
Yeah, so, my question to you, though, is, the whole point is, why would we not let someone who, I mean, the, the part-time clerk is annualized at $56,550, right? So, why did, why, why would we be that far off on a maximum range? You know, how many, are they included, the part-time, are they included in the 30 positions that we outlined?
Um, I believe so.
Was it just for part-time or, I mean, just for full-time?
Yes.
Anybody that was on the staff was...
So, I guess, I get, it's dangerous for me to try to interpret what you're saying.
Yeah.
I'm not just saying it because of you, I'm saying, my wife would probably say the same thing, that I shouldn't interpret what she's trying to say. How many people went from going on a pay progression that they thought that they were going to get to...
You should have that in the Q and A's that Mr. Lyons provided. There was a...
I'm more, and I read through all those, but what, I didn't see a number of people that went from being...
It was 71.
No, I'm...
There were 30 titles where the range maximum was lower than the MAG number, so 30, and it was 70 employees.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm not...
And that was, that was 11 job titles.
Right.
That went down from their current maximum more than 5%.
Which includes salaries. Right, but I appreciate that, but that was not the question I was going to ask.
Okay.
So, the question I was going to ask, how many people went from being not topped out to topped out?
I don't have an answer for that, but we could find out.
So, if someone thought that next year they were going to get a raise, how many people, because we lowered...
We can find that out, but I do not have that information.
Okay. That's my, we're not talking about the person that's only been here a few years and they looked and said, "Well, on an annualized rate, they may get to 56." I'm more concerned with the person who's been here 20 years and they're, you know, and we're not talking about department head position. We're talking about someone that's been here for a while, they thought, "This is what my max is going to be," and then because of the study, their max has gone down and they've all of a sudden going from topped out or not topped out to topped out. And that's...
We can provide that information to you, yes. My guess is that there will not be that many because we're only looking at 11 titles that were more than 5%. 5% is not really an awful lot, and while some of them did go down more than 5, it wasn't, it wasn't like, you know, they went down 20 and 30%.
Sure.
That, because then your question would have real teeth, because that really starts eating into the range. 5%, that, that's barely a mouse nibble, but we can get that information and we'll get it back to you.
And you see what...
1,280 employees. We had 1,066 employees whose range maximum went up, and of that, 515, the maximum went up 5% or more. So...
That only leaves about 1,500 maximums.
1,066, so you've only got...
200.
200 and some employees who even have the potential of having, being near the top of the range. Not that that's insignificant in any way, but the vast majority of employees will have maximum range opportunity with this, this plan.
Sure.
And if you count among them, these part-time people, I mentioned when I was talking about that, that this range was an anomaly, but it's the kind of anomaly that we don't want a sort of, a blanket direction from the council not to, not to in any case reduce the range maximum, because I don't think anybody would, would think that you would want to institutionalize something that was a wastebasket range, but it was in use. It was, it was in use. It was, it was there, but it, I don't think that anybody ever anticipated that a part-time entry level position was going to go to a top end of 50-some, 50...
$56,550.
$56,550. I mean, it was just, but it was there.
Is there any possibility that you would have to pay a part-time person a little bit more on an hourly basis than you would a salaried person, you know, because of the benefits and different things like that that would make that annualized to a different number?
Typically, what we have to be very concerned with in doing our reviews is the reverse, where part-time people who are doing substantially similar work to a full-time position are paid less. And we're always in the position of saying, "You cannot call this person a janitor and this person a custodian and pay the full-time custodian in this pay range and the part-time janitor in this pay range." If they're, if they're doing substantially equivalent work, they have to be in the same pay range. So, normally, sir, the reverse is what we find, that they're, they're trying to pay the part-time people less than that.
And again, too, as an organization, if you feel you need to pay someone as an individual employee more because they're working part-time and you want to offset the lack of benefits, as long as you're within the range, there should be no issue, because the equal pay issue is pay grade structure, not specific salary per hour.
Let me go back. I want to clarify something. By no means do I want you to think that you didn't do a good job. I didn't, if I insinuated that, I didn't mean to, because you did a fab... I didn't, if I insinuated that, I didn't mean to, because you did a fabulous job. I'm just saying, as a council, that we have to make sure the study is fair and that equality is across the board, because the taxpayers are the ones who are footing the bill on this. So, I want to clarify that. One question I want to ask, who will make the decision, decision on reclassifying a person's job? Who will make that decision on...
Going forward?
Yes.
Going forward, it will be your human resources people using the tools and the information that we will leave and train them on to make decisions using the same criteria that we used in setting the process up.
Okay. And I know, Carolyn, when you first started talking, you were talking about how you all arrived at a lot of this, and you said what you did was you used old structure and you, you know, plugged in the information that the city gave you, and you used an old structure. My question is, with the uniqueness of our city...
No, I didn't say old structure. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Okay, that's what you're saying? Okay, if you didn't mean that.
No, I, we designed a new structure based on external market to make sure the overall structure was externally consistent with the market in terms of what kinds of structures you see in the market, what kind of range what they have. And then, once the structure was designed, we began to look at job profiles from the information provided by the employees through the job analysis questionnaires and the supervisors. And then, those jobs, then, using the job profiles are put within the structure. So, if I misspoke or said it wrong, I apologize. I didn't mean that.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay. And going back, I know the employees did the JQs, the supervisor signed off, when you all talk, I mean, the department heads, when you all talked to them, it's my understanding, when you sat down one-on-one with the department heads, you said, "Okay, here is what your employee said, here are the ranges, the ranges." You always show them the ranges in their departments, right?
Right, but we did not review with the department heads questionnaire by questionnaire.
No, I know that.
Okay.
Okay, and that's a good point. That's where I was leading. Don't you think it would have been even more fair, I'm just throwing this out, if you had said, "Okay, Doug, this is your department. Here are your people. Here's how we classified your people," and then get Doug's input, because they are the frontline people who supervise these people, and at that point, you know, they can say, "Well, I think Bill, he does do this, but I think he's misclassified because his job entails a whole lot more than this." By getting the department heads, who are the frontline people, getting their input on, once you did their departments, do you think that would have helped eliminate a lot more?
Some of, some of that happened anyway on the second, when we came back with the initial recommendations. Some of that happened. One of the things that you have to look out for a little bit by giving that much detail is that it starts getting to be a personal thing.
So, will the...
That, "I don't like the way John performs this, or Sue is really a superstar, so, you know, we need to say Sue belongs in a higher job title and John, because I don't think he's doing very well, I'm going to suggest that his job maybe should be down," and we lose sight of the structure.
But, in reality, talking, well, and that's, this performance that the city's going to eventually go to on their pay, that's the same scenario. You know, Johnny is performing...
But that doesn't impact on their job title.
But, it's still objective like that. But I'm still saying, since these department heads are the first-line people, they know exactly what their employees are doing, and I just think that classifications would have changed a little bit. I was just looking through here, and I see where a tree trimmer is making less than a help desk person sitting at a desk. Now, I am saying, if you had talked to, let's say, urban and environment, exactly what they do and the danger of their job, why would, and I'm not belittling any job, why would a desk person be making more than a tree trimmer?
And let me, and I'm, and I want to use that as a hypothetical, because I don't have the details of that, but there are titles that were carried forward in the system that may not have reflected the work that was actually being performed by that incumbent. So, you may have had somebody whose payroll title was just picked up as tree trimmer because at one, and I'm not saying that was true in this case, but let's just say hypothetically. You can look through here and you can say, "Well, you know, why would somebody who's a tree groundsman be under groundskeeper, maintenance worker, in that fact, a good old pay grade 104?" Well, because when we look through the titles that were groundskeeper, groundskeeper, maintenance worker, and tree groundsman, they all appeared to have substantially similar core job functions, even though they may have been carrying three different titles. So, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember the tree trimmer specifically, but they may not have been trimming trees. I mean, it just could have been a carryover title.
May not have been trimming trees.
They, well, they may have been, but I'm just saying, I can't remember that particular one.
But no, I'm saying, and I'm just trying to, and just looking at these titles, I don't, when you look at classifications, I'm going back to the problem I have with some of this, and I guess I may be a little bit too passionate, passionate about it, but you got a tree trimmer making, and we know a tree trimmer is trimming trees, or they should be trimming trees.
And let's just say they are.
And the danger of trimming trees, making less than a, and I'm not belittling anybody, don't get me wrong, than a help desk person?
There, there were 14 factors that were used to evaluate all jobs. The reality is that many of what are traditionally called blue collar jobs carry a certain physical danger to them. But that physical danger is only part of the evaluation. You also pay jobs for what they know.
Okay, let's stop there.
And for what they do.
I'll go another place, I'll go another way. I know that you have your police chief, I think it was your fire chiefs, those are two, I can't remember the other five in that category. You had them under the unified plan and not under the safety plan. Now, why wasn't the fire chief and police chief put under the safety plan? Because, now, you said it's based on what they do. You let the fire chief have a fire somewhere, now, you have them under the administrators, under the unified, not the safety. But you let a terrible fire break out, a big wreck or whatever, if that fire chief is there, that fire chief is going to do the same thing that their employees are doing. So, why would you put the police chief and the fire chief in the unified and not in the safety? I'm going back to my point, classifications. To me, that would make sense to classify them with the firefighters and with the police officers and not with the uni, but you all classify those two individuals as administrators. So...
With all due respect, they are administrators. I would, I would love to see the police or the fire chief in turnouts carrying a hose into a building.
Oh, but you may...
I would love to see that.
In Murfreesboro, in Murfreesboro, I guarantee you, in Murfreesboro, I'm not talking about Smyrna in the West, but in Murfreesboro, you go to a fire or whatever, and that fire chief needs to be, he's going to pull out that hose. You let Chief Chrisman go somewhere, it's a shooting or whatever, he's going to act like a police officer.
And if they were doing that, they should have told us that in their questionnaires, but they did not.
Common sense would tell you that. If you have a fire chief, he's going to perform fire duties. If you have a police chief, he's going to perform police duties. You, I, I wouldn't expect to be a fire chief and be out on the fire and looking if I'm needed to help. I mean, that's common sense. They're going to, if they're needed, they're going to step up and do the job that their employees are doing. I mean, what would I look like being a fire chief and let a fire happen, and they're letting out a fire, and I'm standing there looking, because I'm an administrator? No, I'm a fire chief. I have, to be a fire chief, they are experienced and they are trained.
Typically, when you have a career structure like the public safety, which is a sort of paramilitary organization, whether it's fire or police, your administrative people are going to be in with your top-level administrative plan. Their salaries, if you wanted to put the pay ranges in the public safety plan and just run the public safety plan up higher, there would be no difference, because they're already being compensated well above what a firefighter would be paid or a police officer would be paid. So, should they choose to, to actively pull a hose or get involved in an incident, that's fine. That is a personal preference. You will find, it's just like your, your finance director or anybody else may take on lower-level duties if they feel it's appropriate, but that's not the main thing they're being paid to do. Their main job is to direct the fire department.
Okay, is to be a administrator, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions while we're talking about the fire department. The market value is pretty, what, pretty well, if I understand it, what the market value is. You know, you go out and you compare different cities to the, to the market value, and you establish a minimum and a mid and a max range. I'm looking at a little chart that came out of the first one, and, and these are our direct competitive cities. You've got Smyrna, you've got Nashville, you've got Franklin, and you've got Brentwood. And on the minimum, the average of those versus Murfreesboro, we're down $4,483. On the mid-range, we're down 9,005. And on the max range, and this is a firefighter now, so let's get the job category, I got to be, make sure that we understand that. And then, the max range is 15,462. What that tells me is everybody else is paying more than we are. Did we get our market analysis right?
Are you looking at a detail that identifies specifically?
Yeah, I'm looking at the summary.
So, you're saying that market average is 35,49, you're looking at 34,38. See, now, you know, those are your current old ranges. That's not the new proposed ranges.
Yeah, what you're seeing on the right-hand side of that page is your current.
What page are you looking at?
Well, now, that's, I'm, I'm using the old figures is what I'm doing.
On page, tab three, it's page two, says page two of three. Where it says Murfreesboro on the right-hand set of columns, those are your current pay
Okay, now, we've got, we've got little percentages out beside of the...
Right, and that's your proposed ranges.
Okay, but does that percentage 3.2 mean we're below the average?
Currently, yes. And the range we proposed is 37 to 53, which puts you slightly above what the market average is. What you're seeing on that survey page is what your grades are now. And then, if you go to tab four, page three, and look at firefighters, it is 37,411 to 53,423 in our proposal. So, you're coming up on both the minimum and the maximum.
Do you have any idea how confusing that is?
So, let's, let's add another one to that, you know, if we just go straight on down the list on the firefighters, if we go to the fire captain, the averages, I believe, and I'm looking at the old ones, but I'm assuming you didn't change the averages, you didn't change any of the market information, right? So, the averages on...
Actually, on that one, we did, because there was a battalion chief that escaped our view the first time, that we removed, because the fire captain clearly is not a battalion chief that came in from one of the responding organizations.
Your shift commander's battalion chief.
Yeah, so, we missed that on the first go-around and when this came up.
Sir, real quickly, before we move to, if we're looking at page two or three, we're showing our old range was 34,561 to 38,413. Is that correct?
Your old range is the one on the right-hand side. That is current external market to your current original, not our proposed, original Murfreesboro ranges.
And now, we're going to go from 37 to 53.
53, that's our proposal, yes.
And then, the, the one on the left, it's 35,7 to 49,4, that's the...
That's the market average.
The market. So, if you look at that, we're going to be 2,000, 2,000 above the market for the low end, 3,000, excuse me, another 2,000 above the market on the mid-end, and then, we're showing 5,000 roughly on the high end above the market.
That's about right.
And the reason for that is because with that uniform structure, no pay grade in the proposed structure is going to exactly reflect the market ever.
Okay, sorry, I was just making sure that...
So, the, the, the couple of things that, and I don't know, we got a lot of questions, I don't know if the, if the list is going to be, it said somewhere in here that you're going to provide some more answers to questions we've had, but a couple of things that we've heard a lot, or that I've heard a lot. Matter of fact, I saw the, everybody was CC'd on the email, so I know we've all heard it a lot. You know, if, if, and I don't know what the new averages here are while we take out the battalion chief for, for...
It took it down slightly in the nine percent.
So, you know, the, the averages for a fire captain, let's go with that, and then I want to talk to you about, you know, the idea that, how did we choose what those peer cities were for which positions and does it, you know, that's a tough, that's a tough program, you know, I know, you know, we've heard a lot that...
We, we didn't choose peer and competitor cities for individual titles.
Yeah, so, if we, should we have more closely, I mean, should we have said, you know, carved that out a little bit more?
No.
Okay?
And even if you did, you have no guarantee that those people would have responded.
That was...
Yeah, so, one of the questions we're getting is, hey, it's not really very likely that, you know, we're, if we pull in Collierville, which was the battalion chief, so it really doesn't matter anyway, but it's not real likely that somebody's going to come from Collierville necessarily to, you know, to really, that's not necessarily our market for, for maybe some positions, and maybe it is for other positions. It certainly would be for the city manager. Maybe it's not for one of these other positions. Is that something, I mean, are we, are we, how confident or clear are we that that is absolute, that what we've done as far as who we've chosen? And I, I don't know if I was part of the process when that happened, but...
No, I believe that happened before you came on, on the council, Mr. Lawrence. There was a great deal of thought given into the selection of the surveyed cities. We spent a good amount of time working on it. We had a focus group of city employees that we bounced that list off of and presented it to city council for them to approve before the study ever started. So, all of that was reviewed very closely, including the council approving it at an open council meeting to use these cities. And I know there's always a lot of discussion when you look in a pay study where you get to the end and there's a, well, you know, why is this city included in that one? And what we tried to do was take kind of an approach that covered numerous paces. We had our, our competitor cities, that's the local labor market that we compete for talent every day. We also included the regional communities, because, you know, as Ms. Harris has pointed out, we're, we're great at what we do, and we wanted to make sure that we looked beyond just the middle Tennessee market and looked at some of those communities, you know, like Collierville, that certainly is also a very innovative community. And for the leadership positions, we did look a little bit more naturally and linked those to the comprehensive plan, the Murfreesboro 2035. So, there was a great deal of thought and planning that went into those.
I think I'm, you know, I think I'm fairly comfortable with that. I understand the idea behind it, you know, as far as where we would do. I really, you know, I've been kind of open with people about that who have asked me that question, that I kind of feel like we need to have some of those cities in there, and it'd be dangerous to try to pick and choose who we use. The other side of the, the other kind of question that we got that I think might be a little more, I don't know, I don't know if valid or whatever I would want to say, or more kind of a stronger idea to me is, is the idea that we would say, okay, you know, how, how... a stronger idea to me is, is the idea that we would say, okay, you know, how much weight do we put into the classification for public safety relative to some of the other positions? And I think some people call that internal equity, I think other people call something else internal equity, but the question that I've gotten, which I, you know, I don't know that I know the answer for is, you know, do we take someone who's, let's just say, for instance, supervises six people over here that, you know, may not necessarily be a public safety job, and let's take somebody over here who supervises those, you know, the same number of people, so on a JAQ, that would look very similar to the other. One is running into burning buildings, and one is not. Should we, you know, is there any differentiation between those as it relates to, you know, how we view these in the plan? And I mean, I, I, look, I, you know, the emotional part of that to me is significant, and I will tell you, you know, on Easter, I live close to a firehouse, and, you know, on Easter, I sit there and listen to the sirens go off hour after hour leaving there and thinking, you know, it ain't me, I'm hunting Easter eggs in the backyard, you know? So do we differentiate for that?
Again, there are 14 factors. None of them is controlling. Raw numbers in and of themselves are not controlling. There's a big difference, as you were just talking about, supervising a company of firefighters that probably is only three other people than there is of supervising a dozen people that are doing data entry sitting at a computer screen. So raw numbers are not per se controlling, and no single factor among those 14 is controlling. They all work together.
As to how they're classified, is that what you mean?
Exactly, in terms of where they fit within that evaluation profile, and hence where they're placed within the structure. Another reason for having two separate structures, one for the, if you will, boots-on-the-ground public safety people, is that that makes it easier to compare them among themselves, which is much more appropriate to look at them together than to try and pick them out throughout the whole organizational structure.
All right, I'm trying to speed through this a little bit, I apologize, 'cause I'm taking a lot of time. To go right to that fire captain idea from firefighter, we were looking at the averages to fire captain, you know, what we have on the averages, and you said it might have come down a little bit, was 51, 63, and 74. Our numbers are 51, 59, and 67, which are noticeably lower than those averages. How do we get from, you know, firefighter, we're gonna be a little bit above the average, to fire captain, we're gonna be a little bit more noticeably below the averages? Even when you include all the peer cities that maybe everybody doesn't want?
Do you want the long answer or the short answer?
Short first.
The right one. Short answer is that your captains in any other system would be lieutenants, because we checked. Based on their duties and responsibilities, they would be called lieutenants.
Eight of the nine respondents for the position of captain have lieutenants. And you have a job where you do not have the title of lieutenant in your fire department. You go from firefighter to driver to captain. Most departments go firefighter, driver, lieutenant, and captain. A captain, a lieutenant is typically an engine company commander, that is a piece of apparatus. A captain is a station company commander typically with a, two pieces of apparatus, or more, or multiple stations. You have nine stations, and as a result, and you've probably grown that way over a period of time. This is a long answer, and you've grown that way over a period of time, and because of that, you only have four stations that have more than one apparatus or truck or vehicle, whether it's an ambulance and a truck or two trucks, in a station. In those situations, you have captains who are supervising four, five, six people. In the stations where you have one captain on duty and only one piece of apparatus, you have them supervising three or, I think, three or four at the most.
Three other people.
Typically, three other people. That is an engine company commander, and that's a lieutenant in eight of the nine responding organizations. However, you don't, because you have so many stations, and you have driver, firefighter, captain, then you have shift commander, which equates in most organizations to what's called a battalion chief. The battalion chiefs are over multiple stations. Typically, you, your captains, your captains here in Murfreesboro are engine company commanders, but they're also responsible, many of them, not all of them, because sometimes you have more than one piece of apparatus in a station. Many of them are also station commanders. So you're giving them the benefit of the doubt. They're not just an engine company commander, they're also a station commander, because you have a lot of stations. So we're not putting them down where the lieutenants would come out in the fire department, yet they're not fully captains. Now, it gets more complicated than that. And because of the structure in your fire department, you actually have some captains that are, have more responsibility than other captains. That's also true in your police department. So because you've already used the title of captain for what is historically lieutenants in other departments, you can't promote them to captain. You've already used battalion chief, which is the next level up. You've sort of, and I think you're using shift-
Shift commanders.
Shift commanders, which you're going to pay a stipend for, which-
No, shift inspector.
Shift inspector. Okay, shift inspector. And those may also be doing, building, you know, the plans inspection and so forth. To further muddy the waters, all of the people who were captains appeared to respond word for word, percentage for percentage, the very same information. So they took some existing sheet, and every single one of them copied it onto their JAQ. So you don't have a way to go back and say, what we had to do was request from the fire department, a duty roster by station with the number of engines or apparatus in each individual station to be able to sort out who's on first with the captains, lieutenants, which you don't have, shift commanders, which you do have, which are typically called battalion chiefs, but station by station, who's doing what. Now, it is not within the scope of our work to go back and say, nor did we do it in the police department. And you have, what is it, like an animal farm, all the pigs are equal, but some pigs are more equal? You have situations existing in the rank structure in both organizations where there appears to be a responsibility disparity. However, if you go back to the paramilitary operational mindset, you could call it a different MOS if you were in the military. So it is what your commanding officer says it is. If the commanding officer says, you will be a captain, and you will supervise a truck and an ambulance, you will be a captain, and you will have one engine company, that's what you do. So it isn't necessarily exactly, and Murfreesboro is different, you have every right to be. It's not wrong, but what we did wasn't wrong either. We sort of split the baby in half, so to speak. That was the long answer.
Thank you for explaining that to us, 'cause that-
I didn't know that.
I didn't know it.
And we actually went back and contacted those organizations and got information on their lieutenants. And the proposal that we put in for your captains was approximately 5% higher than what they had their lieutenants on the average. So as Carolyn indicated, we did bump it up a little bit in recognition that they were not, in the strictest sense of the word, the same exact lieutenant, there was a little bit more to what they were doing.
So would you recommend that in this proposal that we're looking at, and we've talked about, I think Mr. Lyons has explained to all of us about the box and trying to fit all the ranks within the box. Who would look at that? Mr. Lyons?
I believe a salary range overlap analysis and looking at the rank structure for, you know, public safety and, you know, perhaps even the rest of the organization is a whole separate analysis once you would nail down your classification, your compensation plan. There are multiple issues that are involved in salary range overlap analysis, and it's complicated, and, you know, once we would get past this, I think that's another conversation for another day about what that approach might look like.
If I could just say one thing, excuse me for just a minute, I just wanted to follow up and say, very carefully where these recommendations made for your public safety positions, so that if a more critical analysis was done in terms of what appears to be in some cases differences in the total work responsibilities within some of the rank structure, which was outside what we were asked to do, you are not put in a difficult situation because we have taken into consideration there may be a need to look at that rank structure and do something additional with it at some future point. It's not up to me to quote, reclassify a captain to a major or a major to an assistant chief. That's an internal promotional issue. That has to do with budget allocations, approval by the council if new positions are created, new job titles are created. But we have not put you in a bad spot should you desire to do that as a next step.
What does your footnote mean, 10 active proposed classes in public safety plan? What is that? There's seven listed, but the footnote says on that page three, under tab four, it says 10 active proposed classes in the-
Well, that means that there are that many classes that have bodies, positions, which should be all of them. I don't believe you have any, yeah, if you count, there should be, there are 10 titles there. That's what that means, is there are-
10 titles within the seven classifications.
Within, yes, within that set of pay grades. And I think you'll find that in the unified as well, although the number will be significantly higher. At the very end of that, there'll indicate how many titles are active. The reason that that is, is because occasionally there will be titles that don't have any positions because it was either vacant at the time of implementation or some reason like that, but it'll still show up.
So were you part of the pay supplement thing, or was that, did that come from staff, the pay supplement for the shift commander or shift inspector?
For the shift inspector and the fire training, shift training officers. Yes, that was, that was one of the questions that came up since the report was put out and we agreed that that needed to be included.
So how does that relate to existing salary, then? So do we go back to prior to this to figure what-
There are several supplements that are offered in the city. The MAG study did not analyze those whatsoever, and they remain unchanged. So they are over and above the numbers that you see in the report.
So the pay that they should expect is something in addition to what they're presently getting?
It would be the number in the report plus the supplement that they're currently getting.
And if they approved this new supplement?
And then the new supplement, if you approved the recommendation on those two positions in fire.
So their base pay is what it is right now, plus, is, I wanna make sure I'm understanding you-
Okay.
-how we're gonna figure their base pay and the supplement.
Yes, sir. The annual salary is listed in the MAG report. If the employee gets a supplement, you would add the supplement to the number, and that would be their grand total.
Could I just make one comment on that? We did look at the supplements, and we did not comment on them because we felt they were appropriate and should be continued. So we made, we did not recommend any change in, I mean, we didn't recommend it, but we did look at them.
Okay.
So it was something we took into consideration.
And when you took into consideration, talking about the, since we were talking about earlier the firefighters and public safety people, from what I'm hearing and maybe my narrow mind is interpreting, that we got called up on the names, you know, you just talked about the apparatus, the number of trucks and all, seems like we got kinda caught up in that. Did you check to see if our firefighters have, even though we don't have as many positions like lieutenant and all that, but did you check to see if, comparing the other places, did our firefighters have the same training that these people received and the same certifications and experience?
That's a very good question. The basic certification is what we're looking at here. You are paying supplements for other types of issues, and Glenn can speak to that more, but we did look at the supplement structure over and above what the base compensation is for fire and public safety. And it is a nice supplemental package, and it reflects additional training and experience. The survey of other markets is base to base, and then whether or not they're paying supplemental pay for things, some are, some aren't. And we did look at the structure of other organizations, and we did look right down to staffing and allocation of individuals, which was not an issue in the police department, but it was in the fire department. I don't know if you want to-
Mr. Lyons, there was, there's a lot of young police officers and firefighters that were bumped up, a fairly large bump. Is that still in this plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good.
That'd be the adjustments to minimum or the adjustments to maximum.
Okay, all right. Now, do you and Mr. Godwin have a systematic plan to review this periodically and work through these issues and answer these questions that have not been presented or not been totally answered and still a lot of confusion on?
Okay, what we would like to do is make sure we've given the council all the information you need to help you consider this. And I've been trying to take notes as your meetings gone along here about some additional points of information. You know, some of these should be very quick for us to turn around and get to you. And part of your question, I wanna make sure I'm understanding you, was the going forward piece. And I think there's two parts to the going forward piece to keep it current. We know it's a dynamic organization, we've talked about that. I would anticipate each year at the very beginning of budget, that departments would be asked, are there any positions that need to be reviewed to be reclassified? They would then fill out a JAQ, it would be analyzed, and then it would either move up a pay grade or it wouldn't. And that would come to you for approval in the budget. Secondly, there's the issue about the market. And I think, you know, what we would wanna talk about is setting a regular interval, it might be, you know, three years, where you would actually go out and resurvey the market, just like we did this time, to see what has happened in the market, what changes need to occur. And then aduably, you know, there's the increase in pay that, you know, the city council's been very generous with as we move through the plan.
What I was kinda getting at is giving you some help in that process. I'm a Presbyterian, and if somebody drops their hat, we form a committee. Pick it up. So I'm gonna throw out the idea that the mayor appoints two, five committees, remember, you never wanna get your committee too big, to help you on a systematic, timely basis go over this and answer the questions to the best of all of our abilities about this plan, because I'm gonna leave here tonight still confused. I think I have a better understanding of what it is, but there's still a lot of questions out there that people ask me that I don't know the answers to.
You know, by all means, I'm more than happy to take as much time to help answer those questions. I have had some employees come meet with Mr. Godwin and I, and that's been a standing offer throughout, you know, the study. We are more than happy to sit down if employees have questions.
One of the things, too, if I could add, Vice Mayor, about a year ago, there was an opportunity to staff another individual on the human resources team, and we came to council, and council approved the addition of an HR analyst. And the HR analyst role is different from the individual who held the position before as an HR assistant, and one of the main components of her job description, and she was here earlier this evening, is to become, if you will, a subject matter expert on the classification manager software that MAG is turning over to the city, which will include on an ongoing basis, market reviews, research, spot surveys with other localities. So that component of the job was missing in essence from the position that was held before. I won't turn down any suggested help, of course, but one of the components of Ms. Corbin's role is to do just that.
Now, information is wonderful, but if it sits on her desk and it's not dispersed and disseminated to the council- and it's not dispersed and disseminated to the council and possibly the city manager sending it down to the people it affects most, you know, it's just sitting in a folder somewhere or sitting in the computer.
I think certainly information is, you're exactly right. How you manage the information and the data is essential. So I fully expect, I'm confident that Ms. Corbin will be very dynamic in her efforts to work with department heads and has, since she's been here a short period of time with respect to hard-to-fill positions, being proactive in some of those circumstances, looking perhaps at what some of our other competitors are doing. We all the time get salary survey requests from other cities. But they've been dispersed amongst different individuals in the past. So this effort to hire the HR analyst is to also try to accomplish that, to be proactive, to understand the tools that we have with classification manager. Because it's, in essence, been, here's an Excel spreadsheet, let's see if there's an increase of 3.5% and run the numbers. That doesn't get you internal equity, ever. I mean, steps will really never get you closer to internal equity. So it's our job to really become the subject matter experts and that's what Mr. Lyons has charged us with doing on how the system works on an ongoing basis.
Okay, well, I got the mic. I'll ask another couple of questions. We got a range, a low, a medium, and a high. How does young police officer Jones move up that rank to the maximum of his position, then he's promoted and gone up? Is it all subject, subject to an opinion of someone? Are there scores? Are there tests? Is there an evaluation system?
To a large extent, you all control how people advance through the range. Because they can only advance through the range with money that you approve to be spent each year. Doesn't matter whether there are steps or not. If you say there's no money, they don't move through the range. If you say there is money, they move through the range. How quickly they move through the range, that goes back to things like performance evaluation, how much money you have available, different things like that. But ultimately, you all control how long it takes for someone to progress from the bottom of the range to the top of the range.
And that's...
How quickly they move up through the ranks, you know, sometimes it's fairly quickly you go from a trainee to an officer by completing your training. You don't get to be a sergeant until there's a vacancy for a sergeant.
For some reason, there's a perception out there, I think based on the step system, that we've gone from taking eight or nine years to get from your minimum to your maximum to somewhere around 16 years. I guess what that is, is, you know, 35% divided by 2.4 or whatever. I mean, you know, the amount that we expect in a step. Just real plainly, have we increased the number of years that it takes to go from the minimum to the maximum? And by how much? Is it, I know it depends on what, but if we do the same thing...
Real plainly, the steps have gone away. And now you, as the council, are completely in control, just like you were before. You may have had nine steps, but if for three years running, you didn't give any increases, that was three years that they didn't move through the range.
So the new plan, though, does it take out the steps for the adjustments as well?
I was going to get around to the changes from the...
I'm sorry.
From my cover letter and I was waiting for a break to, I wanted you all to finish up your questions and then point that one piece out. As you saw my cover letter, I am recommending that the step plan in public safety be converted to an open range plan like it is on the unified plan. The minimums remain exactly the same, the maximum remains exactly the same. And the basis for the recommendation to not have steps and go open range is it gives the city council complete flexibility about what you're going to do for pay increases in the future. You've always had the decision about how much increases are on an annual basis. But if you're locked into steps in whatever percent increment it is, the table before you is 2.4%, unless you did 2.4% for the unified plan and the public safety plan, any number other than that, you're going to be off. And how you fix it is not simple.
Can I do just a quick math? Because I think this will help me a lot. For some reason, I think I'm just now, this is just now clicking a little bit with me. If we widened the range on a position, then given, you know, if we have some sort of a standard that we use, okay, if it's a 3%. So for instance, if we had a 27% range, I'm not going to deal with compounding here. We'll just talk simple. If we had a 27% range in someone's position and now we just went to a 33% range in their position. And we give a 3% raise, the city council does what we've always done, which is just if we have money, we give raises, if we don't, we don't. And how much of that, we determine each budget year. What we would have effectively done is by widening that range, we would have gone from a nine-year timeframe to an 11-year timeframe if that went from 27% to 33... Yeah, if the, so by the range widening, it would likely add a year or two or three in most cases. I haven't gone through the numbers, but I mean, the ranges went typically from around 30% to around 35% or did they go to 40 in general?
They did expand it.
About 45%.
Oh, it's 45%? And what were they, just kind of on average, do we know about what they were?
No, we just...
Yes, 3.5% and most of them had nine steps, but there were others that had more?
No, I mean, the width of the range, about what was the average width of the range? It was...
From the bottom to the...
Yeah, from minimum to maximum, is there kind of a...
Be the low 30s?
37. So we went from...
Firefighter was 11% in the old range?
Firefighter 1.
Firefighter 1 because it was a truncated range.
Okay, yeah.
But here's, here's the...
Police officer wasn't the same thing.
Those are the...
So, but then, let's say for general, it was about 31%. So we've widened that to 45. So we're giving much...
15%, so we extended it by about five years.
The software that we're going to be providing to the city for compensation and classification management is what we call our classification manager software. And by going to an open range system, I'm going to really try and give you the short answer because last time I gave you the long answer and I know everybody's eyes glazed over. Apologies for that. But in going to an open range system, you're setting the foundation for a future performance appraisal system or performance management system, which will allow employees, and this question has come up or this subject has come up maybe some directly, some obliquely, a couple of times tonight. But if you have a step plan, you are locking in a sort of pass/fail system where no one can ever be rewarded for performance beyond that that's required to pass/fail. And I could sit here and argue and say, there's nothing really wrong with that. But what David said is that the progression within the ranges is entirely a policy, an overscaping or overriding policy that the council makes of how much funds you're going to provide for people to move through the ranges. If you take your basic progression with the classification manager system, which allows, when it's installed here, to take some of the models of what we have here and say, what should be the anticipated or what we call normal progression within the range structure? Obviously, we're using a wider progression plan here because we're not trying to replicate what your normal progression should be within, say, public safety jobs. We're just trying to say, how do we migrate from this structure to a new proposed structure? And using a calculation or formula for all employees that way. You can go into using a pass/fail kind of system for all employees, whether it's public safety or whether it's unified employees. You can incorporate an open range system into, as a foundation for performance, where you have actually valid markers that allow you to have your supervisors and your leadership within the organization determine where those employees are performing at a different level. Right now, with a step plan, you're sort of assuming a pass/fail, you know? And then again, if at any point the council votes to, say, you're going to give a 3%, well, if you've got 2.4% steps, you're just invalidated. You're not on a step plan anymore. Most organizations don't stay on a step plan, whether they have one or not, because it's not always going to be exactly what the step is.
Part of the confusion about step or not step or, you know, what we have done or doing now is that we haven't followed it. And so it's the idea that the step plan has even existed in the past is, to me, has always been ghostly, you know? I mean, why do you even call it a step plan if you are not going on exact steps? Now, one thing that I would, I think would be important, and this is where the policy that we looked at earlier on your change summary, where we looked, you know, where you get the number of pay grades that you change. You get the 5% plus the 2.5% per pay grade. I think that's critical. You know, one of the things that I think I did in some math, and it's, you know, you know, one of the things that I've tried to think through in this thing and it's, I may be off here, but there's a perception, I think, that, okay, so if I start at this position and I'm trying to work my way through, you know, some upward mobility, that if it's going to take me 15 or 16 years, just based on kind of an average, again, you know, we, I think it's fair for an employee to try to have some kind of idea of what they think might it take, you know? I mean, that's a fair thing for somebody to expect, right? So if we have gone from nine to 16 years, I think there's kind of a perception that, you know, if I start at this level, you know, it might take me 16 years to get to here or 15 or whatever. And then if I get, you know, my next, I finally get moved up to the next one, that there's another 15 or 16 years. But I think maybe to do an example, and I can't just drum it off my head here, but to do an example of exactly what would happen if somebody did some sort of progression where they went from, you know, from this job and they were here for five years and then they got a promotion, how that policy changed, you know, how that policy change would impact that, where they kind of have a more vertical move instead of moving backwards on the, inside the range for the next position means, you know, it may only take 20 years total to get from where you started to the maximum of three levels above you. Instead of 16, 16 plus 16 plus 16, I don't think that's the way the math will work, right? I mean...
You're right. Because you're right. It would be unusual for somebody to go in that kind of perfectly linear progression.
Even if you did, you're going to get at least two, two pay grades above, which is going to bump you further to the minimum. You're going to go into the middle of the next one automatically, right? I mean, or not the middle, but farther into it, so...
Well, depending on where you are, you might wind up with your promotion pretty close to the middle of the next level. Yes, exactly.
And that's one of the things that we have wrestled with, that, you know, we would get the example of someone who was, you know, say, the long-term person who's been in a certain position for 10 years. And then they would get promoted, but they would go backwards so that...
Not inside the range.
Inside, they would be inside the range.
And the steps lead to that misconception. You're exactly right.
Their pay wouldn't go down, but they would go backwards in the next step of a certain area. So now we fix that, we hope, with this promotion policy that we're talking about.
And honestly, I think it makes it much simpler to explain and understand open range versus the steps. You don't take a step number to the bank, you take the paycheck, but it created some confusion where you were at one step number, got promoted, and the step number was a lower number.
So now, if you're promoted, you're going to go two ranges above where you are at a minimum?
For the most part, that's true.
Sometimes it might be three or four.
But you'll be able...
With a maximum of 15%.
Correct.
But if you get promoted, worst-case scenario, you're going to get a 5% increase.
Worst-case scenario.
Up to a 15%.
Well, and let me point out, back to the, you know, I know we've talked about public safety, but we've got the unified plan as well. So let me talk a little bit about how that promotion policy then, with the step plan, becomes awkward. You know, if you had a two-pay-grade promotion and you're at 7.5%, well, that doesn't fall neatly on the step number. So now you're going to move, you're going to do the math, you're going to go to 7.5%. You're going to land in between steps and you're going to have to move up to the next step number. Well, now it's not the same percent increase as the unified plan because you were locked into a step, a number on a step. So again, I believe it does give you more flexibility. It's easy to understand, it's easier to explain. And then everybody in the entire organization is treated the same.
And just let me indicate too, that step plans are an anachronism. There are holdovers from a time when we didn't have computerized compensation plans where we could calculate easily where people would fall. And now, when you have somebody not getting promoted, everybody getting promoted on the same day, okay? All promotions will be, take effect July 1 because that's the new budget year. You don't have that now. And you have the ability not to have that because we have computers and we can figure out things like 2.5% and 7%. But if you have people, as we migrate into a new structure, as you go into this, if you try and keep a step plan, you're going to, right, you're going to fall back in the same hole again. When you have the first person promoted coming out of this new plan with new pay, new salaries, presumably, when they're adopted, and now you're going to overlay those new salaries and you're going to put them right back in a step plan, you're going to come right back again. As Mr. Lyons said, you're going to have the person who comes out $25 under the step and the next person who's promoted because of the old salary. Because we're not going to go back and try and reconstruct where people should be if this was in place the day they were hired. They're going to be $25 over the step. They're going to go to another step. This poor slob here that's $25 under is just going to get the promotion plus $25. The other person is going to get the promotion plus essentially another 2.5%. So you cannot have equity in a plan if you continue to have steps. If you set up what the anticipated length of service should be, normal progression within your new proposed ranges, you will be able to make changes to your structure and those will roll to people as the time passes. Whether you use performance or whether you take some people and say, "Look, time and service is what we're going to count here. That's what makes sense for these people." Other people, maybe we want to have a performance foundation. So it's really up to you, it's up to the policy. But what is being recommended is to level the playing field so you can move forward with the most rational, logical, equitable way for employees to be compensated going forward.
By removing the step, I'm sorry, by removing the steps, what kind of impact did that have on the numbers in general? You know, we had talked about this weeks ago.
It lowered, it lowered the cost somewhat. I don't have the old report in front of me, but I want to think it was 200 and some thousand.
I believe there was about $210,000 in adjustments to steps. And since the steps would go away, there wouldn't be anybody landing in between steps. But what's shown in this report, though, is the 4% increase. And that totals, you know, $2.6 million.
I agree with Vice Mayor Young on your recommendation. I think that was a great recommendation. I do agree with that. Mr. Lyons, you said that in the future, what we're going to do is, I guess each fiscal year, you're going to ask the department heads about reclassification, right? If something needs to be reclassified. As a suggestion, because a lot of unrest is over misclassification, if we ask the department heads before we move forward this time about who in their department do they feel is misclassified? And it's not going to take a long time. It can take them an hour or two. These department heads know their employees so well, an hour or two, they can write that down. That's what I would like to see before we move forward. And another thing, and the reason why I'm saying that, is because according to this, what I'm reading, if a department head submits a reclassification, the cost associated with this will be the responsibility of the department head. Which means that HR, if they misclassify and we change this, then it's going to come out of HR's budget, according to this. And I don't think that's fair, that it comes out of the department head's budget. Because it's saying here, if we reclassify based on the department head, it's going to be their financial responsibility, which is going to have to come out of their budget, which is going to cut other things that are... which is going to cut other things that are needed in the budget. And I'm, mis-classified, it says, based on this.
Hit the MAG cost?
That was, when we started the administrative review process, I know our department heads well, they were going to forward an administrative review if it warranted it, and it wasn't going to be a budget issue. Budget would not get in the way of any of these coming forward.
Okay.
We wouldn't let that happen.
Okay, so going forward, though, still, since a big issue is misclassification, could we not ask the department heads to look at their departments to see, and let's get it right, if there's any misclassification before we?
I believe that's happening right now, Ms. Councils Harris.
Rob, one of the things that gives me some heartburn is the, these reviews, you know, the idea of us voting on this before these reviews are done. I mean, I just can't say it any other way, that it just sort of gives me some heartburn. I feel like I don't know what I'm voting on. If we vote on this thing with 200, or 140, or however many it is, outstanding issues, and it may only be six groups, however you group these things up, I realize that's going to delay it. Part of the reason I was asking about earlier is how, you know, kind of how long would that take, and how many hours we're talking about paying for. I agree, we should be paying you for it. I'm good with that. I don't want it to get out of control if we don't get that back for six months, and it's a whole lot of hours we're paying for. I'd rather pay for less, obviously, but I think we ought to pay for it, and you deserve it. I mean, but another piece of that is, maybe what Doug was suggesting, suggesting the idea of having some kind of committee or something, I mean, I'm not going to be comfortable, I don't think, to vote for this unless we have something really specific in place to know that these administrative reviews are getting followed up on. And I'd like to know the, I mean, if we could wave a wand, and we know what the result of all of them was tomorrow, better. But with the absence of that, I don't want, I mean, I'm just very tentative about the idea that these things are just going to be floating around out there, and we don't really know when we're going to get them back, and how difficult is it to backdate it some number of months after we've approved it, you know?
I believe your HR staff and the manager's office have the same goal, and that is to make sure this is done by the book, correct, accurate, and equitable. And we're going to, you know, look at these, and if they're warranted, we're going to make the change, and if they're not, we're going to communicate back to the employee in a summary report back to the city council about the reasons why. And it is inevitable in a plan like this that there's going to be employees that have questions, and they deserve answers, and we're going to do that. If they make a case, and we said, "Boy, that was an error," we're going to fix it. And, you know, as recommended at the beginning of the meeting, we do that retroactively so that, you know, there is no financial impact to the employee. But in some cases, the answer, you know, may be, we looked at it thoroughly, but in comparison to others in the organization, and the regression analysis, and the market data, the answer's going to be, you know, "I'm sorry, and here's why." We're more than happy to report back to the council, but we want to make it as accurate as we can. These are the people that get the work of the city done. We respect that, we honor that, and we're going to do our very best to get it exactly right, best we can.
Can we have some sort of formal understanding of what we could expect? I mean, not tonight, you don't, I wouldn't expect that answer tonight, but I mean, I think what I would be asking for is that we do have a specific expectation of how we know what the result of these reviews are, and, you know, some very specific information as to, I don't want to go through all 199 of them or anything, but, you know, if we say, "Look, this is how we grouped them, this is why, these are the results," you know, and then give us a little time on that, we'd love to do that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I agree with you, because based on this, once the decision is made, they said this decision will be final. So, I'm a little uneasy until we get the results, because it's saying here that three have to agree, MAG, HR, and city manager. They all have to agree, and the department heads, and after that, it's final. So, what recourse would an employee have if it's going right back to the same people who made the decision at first?
I think we, go ahead.
No, I'm finished.
I think we're going down, as a council, a very rocky road if we try to micromanage every single request that's put into the city. And I know that a couple of those out of those 200 are probably just squeaky wheels wanting grease. There's probably some legitimate concerns that we need to address. But we have to put some amount of confidence in our city manager, which we review on an annual basis. If I don't think he does a good job this year, I'll let him know next time the review rolls around. But I still believe that we have to put some confidence in the basics, fundamentals of this plan, the study itself, and say, "It gives us something that we can work from. It gives us something over what we currently have. I think it's a much improved classification category. I like the fact that we're getting rid of steps, because I have heard repeatedly from city employees, 'I didn't get my step raise, and you owe me something.'" And my answer to that is not what they want to hear, but the truth of the matter is, is "I didn't promise you anything, and I have given you a raise every opportunity I have given it and been requested from the city manager." So, and to correct you, really, I don't determine what the raises are. I vote on the raises, but as a body, we do vote on the raise. But ultimately, it goes back to what can we afford to pay? And we're not doing the books on that. Jim and Rob are doing that and making that decision. So, it, the, you know, I just, I don't want us to continue to put this off and not give people raises, which we've already put it off, and they're losing money currently on the 2% that they would have been getting had we went ahead and approved it on the front side. They're losing money because of it. And the ones who need the money the most at the bottom end, who are seeing the most significant raises, are the ones who are being punished the most by this. Those who are at the top end, who are only seeing 2% raises, it's not affecting them that much. But we are hurting the people at the bottom of the scale. And I think that the sooner we can come to a conclusion that we can implement this, there's nothing that we can't change. I mean, as a body, if we decide six months into this, "Hey, it just didn't work," we could go back. I mean, I don't think there's anything that we're going to vote on that we can undo. If we get to the point that we say, you know, "They didn't handle it right," there's people who will be held accountable for that. And primarily, that, you know, well, they know who they are. I mean, but if they've done a rotten job of selecting us a person to do the study, and the study has come back, and if you just don't like it after it has been implemented and it's not working, then they should be held accountable. But I think if those are the people we've put our trust and our confidence in to this point, that we have to continue to put trust in them and say that we believe what they're trying to do is in the best interest of our city employees.
I understand that, and I can go along with some of the things you're saying, but if we've gotten this far, and we still have that many surveys still out, not saying that they're not going to do what they said they were going to do, I say, my thing is, let's get it right the first time. The employees that have been talking to me, they have not had any problem with getting their check, whether they're going to get it in June, or whether they're going to get it in September, October, knowing that they're going to get a check. But I'm just, getting it right the first time, instead of going in with Band-Aid and Band-Aid, let's get it right. And until, I agree with Mr. LaLance, until we can see the results, and I know we won't have 149 different things coming through, they'll be categorized, but I would feel comfortable seeing the whole picture before I vote. And it's not that I don't have confidence in our management at all, because Mr. Lyons, every time, he gets a perfect rating. So, you know, we have confidence in him. But I'd like to see the whole picture before I vote.
What do we feel like is a timeline that will have those completed? Not to put you on the spot, but what's a timeline we think will have those completed? Not to put you on the spot, but what's a timeline we think we'll have those completed?
We're only in control of part of that, because after we finish our review, they come here for Mr. Lyons' final determination.
What would be, when would your review be completed?
If I said the second Tuesday of next week, would that be good?
I had to think about it.
I think it's realistic that I can tell you a week from Friday, we will be done with our review. I would also tell Ms. Scales Harris that unless the definition of getting it right is that everybody likes what we did, that isn't going to happen.
Oh, I'm not talking about that, because if everybody liked me, I'd be nervous.
Because there, I guarantee that those people who don't get what they asked for will still think it's not right.
Exactly.
So.
We're going to have that. We understand that.
We will do what is right, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the employees or the department heads.
Right.
Will agree.
So, May 22, you feel like you would have something back?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's a week from Friday, and we have under.
Yes. And then, realistically, how, or conceivable, how long should it take our staff to review those?
Again, I think it comes back to an issue, it comes back to an issue where, at that point, 99.9% of the review process should be done. Typically, the best and final is done by our staff. There is no additional in-house review, simply because you're asking, let me go back to the number of reviews that came in, and what I've said, and I've said this before, when this process was determined is how you are going to go forward, that you need to expect that there's going to be a lot of these, because there's no break on it. There's no, there's no brakes on this train. And there's no department head in his or her position as an advocate for their department, or someone who has to live there and eat lunch there every day, to actually act as the brake man on the train. So, we are the brake man on the train. Typically, I do not see that going back then for another bite of the apple administratively. I think that's a very difficult thing to do in-house.
So, Karen, if we, if those get to our staff back knowing that 99.9% of the work has been done, and we get those on the 22nd, is it conceivable that our staff could have the things that they need to be done by June the 1st?
Well, I think that depends on what is considered needs to be done. If 99% of the ones that came to us, and I'm just speaking hypothetically, I'm not going to say this is going to be what's going to happen, because we haven't even looked at them. We've just sort of been saying, "This pile here, and this pile here." But if 99% of them, we say, "Okay, we've got these few that appear to be valid, and we agree with it, and they've provided us with information, and we missed the boat on that, no problem. But we've got this other larger, considerably larger pile over here." At what point are we going to say, "We have done this enough? We've done the initial review. Department heads have looked at the original recommendations. They gave input. It's come back to us. We've given consideration to that input and done final adjustments based on that. We have employee input coming back now through us, and we're going to give final recommendations on that." If we have a large pile over here where we say, "No, we, you know, it was nice, and we understand, but it doesn't really fit. We have these we agree with," how long before finally, somebody says, "That's it, we've had enough?"
Let me rephrase my question. What will our staff have to do when those administrative review forms come back on the 22nd?
I think a lot of it depends on whether or not the council is willing to accept the bulk of our recommendations on the review process. If it comes back in, and we're sitting here three weeks from now, having this same conversation again, then it could take a long time, because...
I don't think, I can't speak for all the council members, but I don't think that we want to grab individual administrative review forms and start reviewing every one of those. So...
Maybe the question's for our staff, you know, once you get these, if there is a small stack or a medium-sized stack, that there are some changes to be made, really, it's just, I mean, is it just changing the range or the classification, seeing where that classification puts them, and?
It's, I'm not in a position to give you an estimate about how long it's going to take, but let me give a sense of what I think is going to be before me. The ones where MAG says, "We've missed, it needs to be changed," they ought to be pretty straightforward. The ones where MAG said, "The administrative review did not meet the test, and, you know, they're recommending denial," those will be the ones that will take more time, because I'm going to want to make sure when I review them, and if I uphold the no decision, you know, those will be the group of employees that will want to ask questions, and I want to make sure I get it as right as I possibly can. So, I don't know how big either one of those two stacks is going to be, and the issues contained therein, but the no stack, I suspect, will be much more time-consuming.
Only thing, this is the last time I'm going to say this. I still say that, number one, you all were hired to give us recommendations, and you all have done a great job, and we appreciate you willing to look at, you know, look at some more again. But I still feel that break, that even though you talked to the department heads, but when you came back with that final report, I still feel like those department heads should have been able to look at that and make recommendations. But, and I don't see, since you're making the recommendation, and this is your report, and you all are a very good group, because we would not have hired you if you were not, but I really don't see you all coming back to us with a whole lot of changes, that you're going to change your mind on a lot of things. I don't see that happening. And I respect that.
I wasn't going to say anything. I think that, being the district manager in Milton Select for 12 years, I've been through all this kind of stuff y'all are going through right now. I really, really liked Councilman Smollett's comments. I agree with him 100%. I think we, as a council, need to move forward, you know, some kind of how. I love the conversation. You know, I've learned a lot during the process and whatever. You're never going to get employees 100% secure. Not going to happen. Not going to happen. Not with me, with my employees, and not with Rob, or Susan, or any of your department heads out there. It's just not going to happen. This group right here has done the most extensive, extensive study I've ever seen in my life. So, like it or not, that's on you. But to get the employees involved the way Rob and the city has done this, unsammonable. I've never seen it. So, I'm going to let Mayor McFarland make a recommendation here in a minute, and, but I'm telling you, I don't know what you all did with your studies. We paid you a lot of money to do what you do, and that's what you do. So, Doug, it may be confusing to you, but it's not confusing to me. It is what it is. As long as you are paying these employees with benefits now, market value, or above market value, I'm good to go. And, you know, we all think we worked more than we, we all, even me. But get with the program. I'm about there.
So, I can't make a motion, but hearing from council members, it sounds like several have questions about the administrative review forms, and that we want to make sure that that process is finished. My line of work, we work off deadlines. Is it conceivable that if we get the information back from MAG May 22, a week from this Friday, our staff will have three weeks? That will put us at June the 12th, which will be right in the middle of our, you don't think we can do it by then?
Mayor, it's physically going to be impossible to get entries into the system for new rates for that number of employees, I would think, given those dates, but if we... if we.
Okay, that's not what my, my question was going to be. Can we get the administrative review forms in a shape that we feel like our staff has reviewed those by June the 12th?
Let me maybe outline, I, I see where you're going, Mayor. Let me see if I can talk through it and, and help, you know, the council understand. I think there's a couple of deadlines that I, that I look at. My budget is, my proposed budget is due to you by Friday. I intend to give it to you on Thursday. We've worked on this a long time and I've been able to find a way to fit a 4% pay increase with no health insurance premium increase to our employees. There's not many city, cities in Tennessee that are going to be able to do that. 4% no health insurance premium increase. When we look big picture about what we're trying to do here, we've been transparent in this process and we're offering raises to our employees that nobody in the state is catching us. So, big picture, let's, I know we're zeroing in on some details. So, the first deadline I've got is my proposed budget to you. And that is built upon a July 1 budget year. But the July 1, for it to be effective July 1, I believe, we have to start factoring it into payrolls that start around June 22nd and we've got to load up data into the computer and that takes a little bit of time. So, you know, what I can say to you is I will give this my immediate attention to review the administrative review forms to see where we're at. But if we targeted the first meeting in June for a council consideration of a resolution to adopt the MAG study, that will be a tight timeline, but this is critical, it's important and we will do our dead level best.
Could I just make a comment? In terms of the, the process and the timeline, and I know that there are employees, I know there are employees who are probably listening at home and, and, and understand what's going on and are very concerned about it because, as you pointed out, there are a lot of people in here who, whatever is already in here is important to them. If, when we finish our review and we've really got it on a fast track to, to do that, if at that point, then, and when we do our review, we're going to make those changes in this report and rerun it for you so you'll be able to see the impact of it, which if you have that in hand, then turning it over administratively, because what we do is focus on this, this is what we do and this is all, I mean, this is what we do every day, all day. You're asking administration then to take a look at things that we've already been through several times and are now getting back to you and if we miss something, heaven forbid, every employee has the, we have the responsibility to make it right. But at that point, if you could take some of the pressure off the whole employees and you move forward with the plan and then internally give staff time, as, as the manager mentioned, to retro anybody who's then later an adjustment is made back to that date, you've made the employee whole. Nobody's lost anything and employees aren't having to wait while administration is trying to handle 10,000 other things with the new budget year coming on board. I mean, just, just a suggestion.
My, my suggestion, just what I mentioned earlier, was just if, if we get to the point of doing that, to have a formalized process, you know, in place that we would know, you know, look, we, we expect to report this to you this date and this is the results of those. If we move forward with it prior to getting the, the reviews, all of them responded to and, and the results of that, we would want to have some sort of formalized process so that they don't, just, you know, we don't kind of forget about them. You know, I mean, micromanaging is something that I did not want to do, I do not want to do. I, I do trust city staff and I understand what Eddie's talking, or Mr. Smollett was talking about as far as, you know, we shouldn't be doing that. And, and Ron, on the other side of the coin, you know, we're the ones voting on it. And, and so what would be the purpose of, of us voting on it if we just said, just go do it? You know, so, so the reality is, again, like I said a few weeks ago, you know, I, I think we would be missing our, our opportunity here if we're not asking some questions, if we're not trying to understand this a little bit and just, just, you know, various, you know, just saying, well, we trust you and go on with it. I, I do think the, the review process does hold, you know, hold you accountable and holds staff accountable that, you know, the reason that I ask you what our turnover rate was in 2000, 2013 and 2014 is so that when we look at it in 2015 and 2016, if it's worse, that's probably not a good thing. It probably means that things like this were not handled like we wish they were as a council. So, you know, we don't have that information yet because it's yet to come. So, I think it's, you know, I, the reason I'm asking questions and, you know, I've, I've had this discussion with you in the past is not necessarily, I, I don't want it to be like I don't trust you or anybody or you or anything, but, you know, I just am not, have never had the idea that I would ever vote on something in any situation in my life without understanding it to a fairly large degree. And this is pretty complex. So, you know, the questions I ask you and the, you know, the frustration that I have and I probably don't do a very good job of hiding is, you know, not, not a, a personal thing, it's just that I'm trying to understand it. I'm a minutia guy. So, you know, apologize for that, but that's, that's how I feel about it.
Rick, I think we need to trust by verifying and it, we, we do need to follow up and make sure that it was handled correctly after it's handled, but, but, but at some point we have to say, it's time to move forward and, and let's go ahead and give the people the raises that they're expecting. Rob, I think you made a statement a while ago that I hadn't heard, which I'm delighted about, is no increase in, in, in the cost of benefits. And, and that's a substantial statement because to give somebody a raise and then them see the same increase in benefits, doesn't really feel like a raise when you go down to the grocery store to buy milk. But, but I think that, that, first I've heard it, it's fantastic. I think it's great news and I'm excited about that as well.
But we're going to give the raise regardless that you talked about. We're talking about the study here getting it right. I mean, we've given the raises, we voted on it, right?
Well, what's, what we've used to plug and build your proposed budget are the numbers out of the, the MAG report.
Yeah, but I'm saying though, if it takes another week or two weeks, we vote, we're going to still give the raises. It's just a matter, they won't get it in this month's check, they're getting it in the next. That's what we're talking about.
Well, what I'm.
Not unless it was retroactive.
I think what I'm working toward is to.
But I'm talking about seeing the results of the 1.9 out there. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He said that we would go back and make that retroactive for the ones that were changed. So, it, you know, but, but.
It's after July 1st.
Right, right.
Then the issue is going to be getting, I, I think what we're hearing, tell me if I'm wrong, but the issue's going to be the time that it's going to take to get this inputted into our systems that if we don't, if we were to wait for all of those, that they couldn't get it inputted, it would have to be off the old system. So technically, they, people wouldn't be getting, getting raises or.
And that's why we recommended the retroactive so that if you approve the plan in concept and there was an individual, you know, administrative review that went in the employees' favor, depending on when it happened, we would make sure they got the money as if it was done ahead of time on July 1, just like anybody else.
That's fair. Let me, let me point to one other thing and it's another brick on your load and I know you've got a pretty heavy load right now, but one of the considerations was the, how do we go forward with the plan? I'd like to see that, a little bit more definition as to what you are recommending as a procedure, an annual procedure for review so that we could have that quantified. So, so that's a part of what we're talking about.
And I agree with you, Mr. Shacklet, that having a set timeframe, say, three years, so that we know it's every three years and if there's some significant change in the market that says, everybody better go double-check, that we could do it sooner, by all means we, we would. But if we don't say it's going to be every three years, then next year they're going to say, are we doing a market study? And, and we wouldn't and then there'd be some discussion about that. So, you know, I think our suggestion's going to be a three-year review unless conditions weren't otherwise.
So, this was listening session tonight and we finalized everything at the council meeting Thursday, right?
Well, that's the direction I want to get, get from council about, you know, how you'd like to proceed. You know, what option would be to put the resolution adopting the study on your agenda, including the, the language about promotions? You know, alternatively, if the council, you know, wants more time, then this is your decision, your plan. So, I'm here at your direction.
So, this was listening, now you want to put it in the, to vote on it Thursday.
Let me ask you something. What has the cost of living index done for the last two or three years? Do you know?
I'm sorry?
The cost of living index.
It's been 1.7, 1.9 and 2. That's, I don't know the, the year before that.
That's all on the hill. Thank you.
So, would you like this on your agenda for Thursday?
I would.
Rick? I'm okay with it. I, I would, I mean, I'd like to see it accompanied by a couple of things. I mean, me personally, and like I said, it's just my opinion, which would be sort of that idea of what we should expect as it relates to administrative review forms. I think it'd be real helpful if we could actually see some examples sometime between now and Thursday of, you know, I, I think that that timeframe from getting from here to here, I think that's a, I think that's a really important item and I, I believe that the policy is going to help that a lot from a standpoint, you know, the, the promotion policy is going to help that. So, you know, perhaps an example of what that might look like is to move through a couple of those ranks and, you know, so it's, it's easy to kind of look at this stuff and say, well, you move up two pay grades, but in reality, what does that really look like? You know, I mean, how does it, how does it really show up? Same way Glenn did the little, you know, going backwards view, that would really help perhaps. I think a couple of those things would be really helpful to, to me.
Ron?
Good.
Doug, Madeline, Bill?
Okay. I think it may be good if, when you do those examples, maybe to have those on PowerPoint just so we can easily look up at them.
Very good.
And, and we would like to see it in writing as Mr. Shacklet requested a plan for the review and, and so that we can say that, yes, we are going to do this and, and we'll go ahead and vote on it so that we know that it'll be reviewed every three years or whatever.
Okay. Any other questions?
The last question. At any time, a council member may consult you or Mr. Godwin or whoever about a specific issue in this plan?
By all means, we would welcome that opportunity.
Okay. Thanks, thanks to each of you for your hard work, staff for your hard work, for all the employees for your comments, MAG for you coming and the hard work you've put into this. So, if there are no other questions, we'll have our regularly scheduled meeting, 7 o'clock on Thursday night and we'll stand adjourned.
Okay. Good job.[201.01]
Back to each candidate, I know in the public safety departments, there are general orders that specifically address far more granular the criteria for promotion. So, there isn't as much, if you will, feedback with respect to job performance as there is with respect to the criteria with which the general order is explicit.
But still, to me, that sounds important. If I'm, if us, the three of us are applying for a job, and, you know, we're, somebody's going to get it in two arms, you know, how will I improve my situation if I don't have some feedback and criteria for that?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Young, one of the reasons why I think we've got an interest in having performance reviews citywide, not just for those going before a promotional panel or promotional interview, the idea that we can give our employees feedback about where their strengths are and where there's opportunity for them to improve, or suggestions for how they can develop their skills more fully, doing that organization-wide is clearly an ideal place to be.
An ideal place to be, but we're not there yet.
No, sir, but I'm, that is a direction I think, you know, we need to head.
And piggybacking off of what you just said, Vice Mayor Young, my question is, what incentives would an employee have to try to be promoted? I mean, it sounds like what we're saying is, Doug, you get the job, Bill and I don't, but y'all just try next time. We don't have any language that will help you get the job, nor does it seem like we have any incentive to make me even want to apply next time. It's just like job evaluations, you know, you have steps and you work towards goals, but seems like it's a dead issue once someone is promoted, just, you know, throw your name in the hat and hopefully your number comes up, or something, sounds like.
I think clearly the additional expectations that come with a larger role, our incentives and a number of our employees would tell you that in terms of the greater responsibility and a result of what they have applied for in the first place. I do think Mr. Lyons is correct, you know, performance management getting to that point would provide us with that opportunity to be more consistent throughout the city. Because I know, for instance, some of the smaller departments, you know, there's immediate feedback because of the size and the scope of the department, it's far easier to give a candidate who isn't successful in getting promoted. But in some of the larger departments, it gets a little bit more difficult and complex.
Mr. Young, when I just, to talk about this, because I really think that's one of the, when we talk about the pay plan, one of the things that keeps coming up that we see is, okay, how can I move up throughout the different grades in the pay plan, or how can I get promoted? Because if you have a large department and you have few opportunities for upper mobility, you know, those, when those opportunities become available, that's important. Noting that we're working on getting to performance management, what can we do to ensure that, you know, positions are, if you have one position that's open and you have four or five people who apply for that position, what can we do to make sure that the communication is there, where the department head clearly explains, this is who I'm going with, these are the things that we've got to work on? I wouldn't think we'd have to have performance management involved to be able to have a department head to sit down with their individuals and say, here's, here are things that we have to improve on. I mean, is that?
No, you're right, Mary. It wasn't, it wouldn't take a rewrite of the system. I think it's good coaching. I think coaching our employees up is inherent in responsibility of most of our department heads. My colleagues would tell you that they do that right now. A lot of department heads are very adamant about coaching their employees up, particularly if they're unsuccessful in a promotional bid. So, that's happening already.
And we've got great department heads, but what do we do to coach our department heads, maybe if they're not strong at communication?
Well, I think the same thing applies. I think that the coaching and the feedback that the department heads get from the city administrative team, in essence cascades down to the department head level. And those are very clear, they're very explicit. So, I think it's just a matter of using that leadership by example that Mr. Lyons and Crumley already use.
So, any other questions on kind of the promotion policy? I've got a couple of other changes I want to highlight, and then, I know Ms. Long's got some things that she's going to want to share with you as well. The other item that had some discussion was the administrative review process. We had shared with you approximately 150 employees have administrative review forms that have been sent to MAG, and they're prepared to summarize. They've not completed their review of all of those yet. They're continuing to work on that, and they can summarize that for you here in a second. But one of the things I felt was important was that if the administrative review does take a little bit of time, should the council approve the MAG report? And a change is recommended out of an administrative review form, it didn't feel fair to the employee that they would be penalized, that, you know, if that is in fact the case, we would make any increase retroactive to the July 1 implementation date, so that no one's harmed because they were on the bottom of the stack versus the top of the stack. And maybe this might be a good time for them to summarize what they've seen in some of the administrative reviews.
Right. At this point, what we're doing is trying to group the requests together so that we can kind of keep them in associated issues. And as we look at them, some of the issues are going to require a little more in-depth look than others. We want to make sure that everyone gets a review and a thorough review, but by breaking them out into these groupings, which we have now done, we've started back now through the groupings, none of this happens in a vacuum. And so, any action potentially impacts on not only others that have requested review, but also potentially has impact back among job titles and/or employees that did not request a review. So, we're trying to make sure that as we go through here, we don't say, okay, yeah, this is good, that's good, this one doesn't make it, without making sure that when we make those decisions, there aren't other unintended consequences or domino effects that we didn't think about. So, we're trying not to rush this because we believe, as Mr. Lyons was saying, that these are important. If it has to be retroactive for a month or two to make sure that everything is right and all of the points connect together, we want to make sure that happens, rather than just saying, we need to get through these in 16 days, and who cares what the results are, because that's not going to work.
In the 60 that you've already done, have there been those kind of instances where one affected another position?
At this point, I have not gotten to those that have a lot of potential for that. So, no, I have not run across those. But in some of the other groupings that I haven't come across, you know, that I haven't started to dig into yet, there is more potential in those groupings. So, I'm taking that approach.
In the ones that you are reviewing, that we sent back for review, are we being charged for those?
You're being charged for the time.
Okay. That's a little problem that I have. We hired you all to do the report and to come back to us with recommendations. And as a council, we are held liable for what you send back, but we also held liable to the taxpayers who's footing the bill here. Now, as a firm, if we are having to pay you all for everything we send back to you to review, it sounds like to me, it looks like to me, that your report wasn't up to par to what we paid you to do. And I'm saying this because if you had 200 reviews to come back to you, where the city employees, and when I say city employees, I'm going to say we, because we are part of this, felt like it was wrong, then I don't think it's fair to charge the city for your time of something I feel like that wasn't properly done, properly done in the first place. This is just my opinion. Now, if you are charged, and I think out of good faith, that you should adjust that amount you are charging the city, because 200 reports coming back to you, that's a whole lot. And I think about, it's about 20%. And I think the whole problem with this whole study is misclassification of jobs, of job titles. I personally think, and I'm not down in your business in anything in what you do, I'm not doing that, but your job was to just make recommendations to us. And once you made those recommendations to us, paying you, I don't think it's fair that we are being charged extra money for that, because it's just a recommendation. Then, once we get your report, and then we decide what we're going to do with what you found. So, number one, I think that's unfair to the city and to our, from what we're paying you for. I just think personally, that's unfair. Now, I feel like, so, let me ask you a couple of questions. When you all were compiling all your information, did you talk to the department heads? Okay. Were they, what exactly did you ask the department heads when you were talking to them?
We actually spoke with the department heads a number of times. Initially, we asked them to help us by identifying any specific issues that they felt were of concern within their department. Once everything was done, we came back to them with our initial proposals, asked them to look through it and see if they felt there was anything that had been missed or not understood.
And let's start right there. You asked them to look at, were they given the opportunity to actually go through what you found and critique it at that time? Like, I don't feel like this is right, this is right? Or did you just lay it in front of them and just say, okay, this is what the ranges we have, and does this look okay?
It was a combination of those. We had the ranges, we also had what is in your book as the class comparison list, which shows what the recommended title is and what the current title is. And they had access to that information, as well as the pay grades that were being proposed along with that.
I still think the whole problem is that when you came back with the final report, since you involved the department heads at first, and I think that's the key here, the department heads, since you involved them the first time, when you came back with the final report, I feel like the department head should have been given the opportunity to look at your report, to see if Shane is in the right group, Doug is in the right class and all. I think that would eliminate a whole lot of this.
They were given that opportunity within their own department. They didn't get to look at somebody else's department to make those decisions.
I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that because we are getting too many complaints out of these various departments, and some of the complaints are coming from the department heads. So, I can't agree with that.
And that is, that is true, but...
But if they were given, if they were given this to look at, when you finished with that, then why are we getting so many complaints?
With all due respect, if everything they wanted was exactly right, you'd have that already, and we wouldn't have been here. So, just because they wanted something doesn't mean that that's the way that it fit into the overall structure.
That's, that's the point I'm getting to, the fit. This doesn't fit. It doesn't fit. It does not fit.
It depends on your point of view. When you are looking at only part of the structure, it may not fit. But when you look at the overall structure, and that's our responsibility, that is your top administration's responsibility, is to look at how the overall structure works together.
That's what I'm looking at, the overall. It doesn't fit. We're trying to put a circle in a square. It, I mean, it doesn't fit. Now, when you first started and asking the department heads and asked the employees to do the JQs, okay. Then, it's coming back to you, you say, okay, this is a cat, four legs, furry. Okay. That's how it started. But when you finished your report, I feel, feel like you should have gone back to the department heads to look at it, because that cat now is a dog, still has the four legs and still has fur, but it doesn't fit.
Ma'am, we did sit with each department head with the information I just shared with you.
Why some department heads not agreeing, and why all these employees not agreeing?
As I indicated, just because it's right, doesn't mean they like it.
It, it's not a matter of like, and that's a good thing. It's not a matter of like.
I respectfully disagree.
It's a matter of fairness and equality. That's what we're talking about.
And that's what the overall structure is. It's not about any one department, or any few people within the department, or any title within a pay grade or grouping. It's about the overall structure.
And it doesn't fit, is what I'm saying. It doesn't fit Murfreesboro. It doesn't fit.
Can I take another view on the administrative review forms? You know, the question about whether or not to get paid for doing that or something, I mean, I think that, you know, for you guys to go back and do those was not part of the original deal. So, you know, perhaps, I certainly see Ms. Scales-Harris's point that, you know, if they had been more accurate on the front end, maybe we wouldn't have all this extra work on the back end. So, I see that point, but I understand it's not part of the thing. So, if we need to pay you for that, so be it. My concern, I guess, would be, or my question would be that if you've only, we've known this was an issue for a good number of weeks, somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, four to six weeks, we've known that we've had these administrative review forms back for over six weeks now, I think if I'm doing my math right, somewhere in that neighborhood. And if we've just now gotten to the point of getting those grouped up, how many hours have we already spent just getting them grouped up and really, really haven't gotten much work done? And do we have some sort of finite number that we know, hey, this is about what we're going to cost the taxpayers to go through these review forms?
I think if I could just respond to that, that's an excellent point. Two things happened. All of these forms poured into the city, and with respect to what Ms. Scales-Harris said, I wanted to mention that in the way that this was structured...
Hold on one second. I don't mean, is there, Rob, is there any way we can make sure that the microphone's working? Because no one can hear anything.
Yeah, Michael?
I know, I don't think ours are working either. Test, hello?
Mine's working.
Is this off?
I think so. No, he turned it on.
Oh, okay. What I wanted to say was, when the forms came in, and I wanted to just loop back if I could for just a minute, with respect to the comments that were made, most organizations really don't provide beyond the administrative review process. Let me use yours, David. Most organizations don't provide beyond the administrative review process. So, if the top-level organization looks at it and determines, this is appropriate, this is departmentally appropriate, then pretty much you're done. Murfreesboro has gone above and beyond that. And be aware that when you do this, you're going to get what you asked for. Every employee has been given the opportunity to turn in a request for review if they want to. So, the fact that you have over 1,200 employees in the organization, and 200 people said, well, why not? You know, there's no downside to it, so why don't I turn in a request for review? So, you really have sort of set yourself into a situation where employees perceive that this is an okay thing to do, and it is okay. There's nothing wrong with them wanting us to take another look at it. But I wanted to get back to your very good point, and that was the timing on this, and I think it's important for the process. One thing, because of being mindful, the Human Resources Department being mindful that this was beyond what we initially had done, we set up the review process, and then the city came back to us and said, look, can you please take a look at the ones that we, we don't want to have to deal with, because we're too close to it? We said, sure, we'd be glad to. But the Human Resources Department then took all of these that came in, used a format that David gave them, to boil them down, to make them easier for us to go through. Now, we're doing another boil down on that to come up with categories of request to minimize the time that we have to be involved with it, which is why we didn't want to take them piecemeal as they came in. Because if we have a whole group over here that are essentially requesting the same thing, then we have a way of looking at those questions and saying, okay, if all these questions are substantially the same question, and we have a similar type of response to it, we don't need to charge you. Okay, here's one, let me do this and write the response. Here's the next one, let me do this and research this all over again. We can look at those and give you a good, solid answer, because they're all asking similar, for similar types of questions. So, we're trying to cut things down and minimize the impact of that. So, your question and your point was well-taken. And also, it speaks to the time that's being taken, because that time on the front end was all done by the city at our request. You know, don't send us 200, because we'll have to pick through them one by one, and that's going to take too much time. You know, consolidate them down. So, it was a good question, and we are mindful of the city's budget, and not just, you know, sitting there shuffling papers all day long.
What I think we've seen is a clarification in what we expected the study to do. And I think that's part of the reason we're having to see you go through things over again, is because I think there was a situation that, I've had to adjust my expectations of what this report is to do, because I think, in fairness to you, my expectations may have been unrealistic, because there was a hidden history that was involved that I had hoped this would address. I think now it's trying to. Initially, I don't think it did. The, I'm going through the presentation of what we just received before the meeting here, and it looks to me like some of the issues have been resolved, that were probably things that are, you've got on your list that you're going to work on, once you get them all categorized and sorted. Having said that, if I had have asked the custodian to clean this room up, and I'd come in this room, and it wasn't as clean as I expected it to be, and I asked him to work on a couple of other spots, I wouldn't expect him to do it for nothing. I would expect, and I don't expect firefighters to work for nothing, I don't expect police officers to work for nothing, and I don't expect the custodian or yourself to work for nothing. You should get paid for the work you do. So, I don't have a problem at all with you billing us to do what we ask you to do. Our punishment is, maybe we're asking you to do too much if we don't want to pay you so much. But the, but I have seen nothing but effort put forth by you guys to try and meet what it is we've asked you to do. You've adjusted, you've adapted. I mean, as far as some of the basic essentials in this, where we had comparable cities, some of them, some of the complaints I've had was, well, we don't compare with this city, or we don't compare with this force. I get that, but we had to have something to work from. We couldn't just draw numbers out of the sky and say that's fair either. So, I do think, even though it may not be a perfect scenario, and nor do I think this will ever be perfect, we could work on it from now till 1,000 years from now, and it will not be perfect. But, but, but it is a starting point, and it gives us something that we can progress from. Just because we approve this doesn't mean we can't ever change it. And I think that's the, that some people seem to feel like, once we voted on this and we've gone to this plan, that we're fixed, and it's never going to change. I don't think that'll be true. I do foresee the ranges moving. I do foresee the ability to make adjustments, which I think that's something that Rob has discussed already. I mean, is it going to be perfect? Never. But is it a good plan, that is, is it something that we can work with? I'll be honest with you, you've gotten me to the point now that I'm comfortable enough to say that if it were presented as, as it looks like it is right now, that I would support it, with the understanding that we're going to continue to make adjustments. So, it, but, you know, in some cases, the weakness of the report was my expectations. And I don't mean that in a bad kind of way. I mean, I mean that what, some of the hidden history issues and things that I wanted it to address are unrealistic expectations. And that's my fault. That's not your fault. So, thank you for what you've done.
If I could make a comment, just kind of follow up on what you have just been saying, you are absolutely correct. This is not the end. This is the beginning. This is the starting place. This is square one and the tools to move forward. Because no organization is ever static for very long. Jobs will change. New jobs will come, some jobs will go away. The market will change from year to year. You all have been around long enough to know that, well, I'm going to show my age a little bit, but way back when, when the financial institutions had all of their issues, accountants were out on the street corners selling pencils. You could get an accountant for virtually nothing. Three or four years later, that was not the case. You have to keep up with those kinds of things. Nurses are another area where you have fluctuation in supply and demand. So, all of this ties together within your organization, but this, as you indicated, this really is just a starting point. This is an overall structure and a set of objective guidelines that can be used within your organization here to go forward. Is it perfect, like you said? No. And there's no way that it's ever going to be perfect, because there's always going to be something that changed. There's always going to be someone who isn't happy. I used to work in another consulting operation, and the head of that operation used to say, we know we've done a good job when everybody is equally unhappy. If everybody's happy, you've probably not done very well in getting things structured. So, thank you very much. I just wanted to, to tag in on your comments there, that this is not the end. It really is just the beginning.
I've got a quick question. And this is one of the things I've, you know, you, a plan this size, you see some things that are positive, some things are negatives. But one of the things I've been struggling with, and Mr. Lyons, this is probably a question for staff as well, but if I, I'm going to use you as an example. If we hire you in at a certain amount, and then we say, if you do everything you're supposed to do, this is what your in-pay is going to be 10 or 15 years from now. And then, you do everything you say for 10 years, but then all of a sudden, we look and we get a study, and we say, hey, Mr. Lyons, by the way, we've rechecked, I know that we told you this is what your pay's going to be, but that pay's now going to be, we've checked the market, and we've, the pay's going to be lower. That's the, one of the things I, I'm having, having trouble with, that if we've told an employee, this is what your top-out pay's going to be, and now we're lowering that number. So, I can understand that with people who we hire to come in. But if I tell you that if you do everything you're supposed to do, this is what your pay's going to be, then it doesn't feel right to say, we're going to lower that because the markets, markets changed. I understand that with somebody who applies later on, but how do you, how do you normally handle that in other organizations?
Well, I think one of the things that you need to consider is, if you hired somebody 10 years ago, and you told them that was the top-end pay, that pay's probably been adjusted seven, eight, nine times over the 10 years. So, there's, there's two answers to that. First, the market is always shifting, the schedules are always shifting. And the other is, that what you told somebody 10 years ago is probably not what they're at today. It's probably changed considerably over the years.
What if it were three or four years ago?
Yes. I mean, you know, we're looking at, we're looking also at a compensation structure that was never, never reviewed from an internal value perspective, as well as external market. In other words, trying to put all of the pieces together. And this is what we do every day, and sometimes the...
And sometimes the, the...